All right, ready? Great. All right, it's two o'clock. I'm gonna call the town council work session for Tuesday, September twenty-third to order. We're gonna start with the arts and cultural survey results. Julia's gonna pick us up.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. This really started back in twenty seventeen when the BTO did a resident sentiment survey that kind of identified arts and culture and their need for potentially a master plan or some further planning efforts or concentration on arts and culture in town. It made its way into the destination management plan under one of the strategies under our economic goal. And so this arts and culture survey is really that first step of understanding kind of where we are right now in the arts and culture realm in town, how residents and visitors see us. So the purpose of the survey was to find out how residents and visitors perceive arts and culture in Breckenridge, how they interact with arts and culture, how they view the relationship between arts and tourism. Number four, have unmet desires and suggest opportunities, find barriers to engagement, and provide input from business owners on opportunities and experiences. So we hired Corona Insights, who are online, to conduct this survey for us, and we ran the survey methodology questions as well as the focus group questions through that steering committee, which had representatives from the BCA, NRO, Breck History, Breck Theater, Breck Film, BTO, and Town of Breckenridge. The next, so we're gonna hear from Corona on kind of a summary, and then they're gonna, you know, open it up to discussion with you all. But the next step of this really, after understanding where we're at right now, is to go into a further planning process. So what we would suggest is, you know, going into a arts and culture master planning process. We would issue an RFP for that. The process would really align goals and strategies around a ten-year vision plan for arts and culture here in town, and it would consider kind of those opportunities and constraints that we have here in Breckenridge, because we realistically can't do everything that everybody wants to do, although we'd love to do it all. There'd be a lot of additional community engagement in order to create that shared vision, those goals and strategies similarly to the process that was done with the destination management plan. With that, we're looking at a two-part potential process, one being the visioning master plan and the other being an organizational structure and funding analysis and recommendations for best practices and models, which would really look at kind of increasing our success of implementing the master plan strategies by improving efficiency, enhanced coordination, and limited liability exposure as well within that arts and culture master plan effort. So with that, we did a huge outreach with Corona on getting eight hundred and twelve respondents to the survey, which is fantastic. In addition to that, we had six focus groups, and those are kind of all detailed, and Corona will go over that in a little bit. The financial implications for the town were, is a max of just over forty-five thousand dollars for the survey work and focus groups. The BTO paid for the survey, and the town is covering the focus groups. The, if we go into the master plan and strategic organizational funding analysis, then we would be looking at an additional cost, obviously. And I just want to point out that the strategic organizational funding analysis was part of that sort of failed attempt at our first process last year for the master plan when we were working with Designing Local. And so it's not really new. We've just sort of modified how it's gonna be reviewed and done to sort of simplify that process. The equity lens, you know, we did a huge outreach again through our water billing, trying to reach the property owners, but then we did mailings through Corona with email. And then they also did through the US Postal Service to get also the rentals included in the responses. Then we also had QR codes sent out through the BTO FERC, Mountain Dreamers, BCA Backstage Theater, Breck Film, and Breck History. And the surveys were English and Spanish. The focus groups also were very diverse. We had, we did have a Spanish-speaking group as well, and all participants in every focus group received a one hundred dollar gift card for participating from Corona Insights. So with that, if you have direction at the end of your discussion on like, if you want us to go forward with the master plan and organizational and funding analysis, we'd love to have that direction from you. We do have a draft scope that we kind of worked off of the previous RFP that went out, and the steering committee would be reviewing that again to make sure that that lines up still. So with that, I'm gonna introduce Kate and Catherine with Corona. They're on here, and they're gonna pull up their presentation overview. We know it was a really long report, so they've really reduced it to fit within this timeframe.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Julia, for that introduction. My name is Kate Darwin, and I'm a principal with Corona Insights. Today, I'm joined by my wonderful colleague Catherine Rocky, who's a senior associate, and we're really excited to talk about the arts and culture research that we've done over the past few months. So if you go to the next slide. Julia already covered a lot of this, but just briefly to review, this was really two phases of work. So we conducted a survey first. As Julia noted, we heard from over eight hundred people. After we analyzed that data, we reviewed the findings with the Arts and Culture Steering Committee, and from that conversation, we then developed a focus group guide and then conducted focus groups this summer. So we spoke to several different audiences, including business leaders, Spanish speakers, arts patrons, young adults, and residents who felt that it was challenging to know what was going on in the town. So again, we heard from almost fifty people through the focus group. As noted, this has produced a wealth of data, which is amazing, but also really hard to cover in forty minutes. So I'm gonna hand this over to Catherine, who's just gonna walk through at a very high level some of the big picture key findings.
Awesome. Thanks, Kate. Okay, jumping in, I'll kind of mix in survey and then bring in focus group as it is relevant. But as Kate mentioned, there is so much there from the focus groups. They were really productive, and there's a lot more than this. So happy to jump into or answer any questions after this as well, if we haven't touched on something that you were curious about. So firstly, most residents who had visited a facility recently rated their experience as excellent or good. Few respondents described any experience or facility in the arts district as fair, and almost none described these as poor. Visitors were most likely to rate Eclipse Movie Theater seventy-two percent and Breckenridge Theater sixty-four percent as excellent. So those two are really leading the pack there with very small numbers reporting their experience as less than good for those two. Riverwalk coming in at third with forty-eight percent of respondents rating this facility as excellent, forty-two percent as good. Old Masonic is at the bottom in terms of specific venues with thirty percent rating as excellent and seventeen percent rating this facility as fair. So we'll unpack that a little more in just a moment, but first focusing on Riverwalk and getting some more nuanced feedback about that from the focus groups. We know this is an area, key area of interest here. So many in the focus groups felt that Riverwalk is an incredible venue, but that it's underutilized. Many wanted to see more activation at the venue, more going on, especially on the lawn, in the outdoor spaces when weather allows, allowing events to kind of be indoor and spilling out into the outdoor areas. For programming, many appreciate and value having the NRO, but at the same time wanted a little bit more variety of programming, especially with some perceived difficulties around scheduling in the summer around NRO events, as the young adult in the top quote here speaks to. But with Riverwalk Center, it's such a gorgeous venue, and it has the capability to take out the seats, open up the garage doors, and be a really cool venue, and it's right on the river. I don't think they take advantage enough of that, and maybe it's because the NRO has such a hold on the venue during the summertime. I do think that they could do a lot better, or at least the Riverwalk Center itself could make a lot more space for something other than the NRO. Similarly, a patron shares their desires for some greater utilization of the space, as we see in the bottom quote. I don't see it well advertised among locals as to what's happening there, and I follow all the things on all the socials, but there's just not that much happening there. We had Pride outside. I don't know that Pride is associated with the arts district or not, but it happened on the lawn outside Riverwalk. And there used to be a lot more shows happening there. It feels like it's kind of just sitting there. Digging into some of the other facilities as well, we know Riverwalk is kind of the most important conversation to be had, but wanted to touch on focus group participants believing Old Masonic Hall could be a little bit more activated, but Backstage Theater and Eclipse are really highly regarded. Yeah, the first quote here really speaks to how Backstage and Eclipse echoing survey findings, that these are really the top two in the eyes of many residents. Same in the focus groups. A resident in the top quote shares, "I think Backstage is actually probably the one that's used more frequently, and Eclipse Theater." Those two are, I think, the places that are doing quality, which we really need to talk about. They're doing good quality. They have some art films that come in, and they're also showing popular things. And of all the things, that's what my family utilizes most, probably every other week. And then again, Old Masonic was considered by focus group participants to be a somewhat forgotten venue in the arts district with some feeling just more could be done to activate the space and engage people who pass through. As a business leader on the bottom quote reports, "I would say Old Masonic Hall on Main Street could use improvement. It's a ghost building, and I know they host art shows there, and I think that it is appealing to look at, and you walk in and you're kind of like, what is this building?" And then people walk in and walk out, and that's it. And I feel like it's a missed opportunity at such a clutch location on Main Street. So jumping back to the survey with the type of experiences that residents want to have. In the survey, respondents were asked which kinds of experiences they're most looking to have in their free time, and then whether they believe those experiences were very easy to find in Breckenridge. So something that stands out here are that physical activity and having fun are highly desired, and also people believe they're easy to find. But then relaxing your mind and connecting with others, connecting with your community or friends and family were desired, but reportedly less easy to find according to these respondents. So the desire and the ability to meet that desire were not really matching up for those ones. In terms of programming and just other things people want to see, this was an open end where we asked, "How would you improve the arts district in Breckenridge?" So as these are open ends, it's kind of capturing what's most top of mind for people. People don't tend to type out a whole lot, so it really is just kind of what bubbles to the surface for them. Thirty-eight percent of respondents found that more is what they want, different or more programming or activities. And this is really common in this type of research. We ask people, "What would you improve or change?", and they just say more. So that's why it's so helpful to conduct qualitative research, to dig deeper into specifically, what are people talking about when they say they want more? Also, on this question, we saw increased outreach and promotion of events was top of mind for some. Seventeen percent, which lines up with, lines up with what we saw in the focus groups digging into the lack of information barrier, which we will get to in just a moment when we talk more about barriers. So in terms of what type of programming people want to see, there was a lot of very specific suggestions, which are in the report, things like TED Talks and sports on the lawn and just a wide variety. But what's really common across all groups and across all suggestions was community-centered programming. That was the common thread. So we wanted to dig into that in the focus groups and figure out what makes programming or events community-centered in your mind. So common ways participants described these community-building types of events were events that are somewhat more casual or informal, that promote socializing and quality time with loved ones, that have some element of participation that are like activity-based. So there's something to do, not just something to see. Participants also especially liked events that had outdoor space for families to spread out, kids to play, and people to not be just seated in one location for several hours, but rather moving around and interacting with others. And many felt the Riverwalk lawn is an ideal location for this type of format. So for the local focused aspect here, I wanted to give just a little bit more context what people were referring to with this. Some participants reported feeling that arts and culture in Breckenridge is more for tourists than locals. They felt arts programming is primarily designed to attract tourists, which they acknowledge, you know, drives tourism and the economy, and that enables all the wonderful amenities they have, and to be having those events at all that they can, that locals can piggyback on those offerings that are also attractive to them, not just tourists. However, some participants at the same time felt that more attention could be given to making events feel more focused on locals and catering to their needs and desires through some smaller, more community-centered events with all the features previously discussed, as well as maybe locals appreciation type of events during shoulder seasons and low tourism seasons. Some even mentioned a local discount for programming or events could go a long way in making locals feel really appreciated. And finally, this aspect of events being regular or recurring. This was kind of twofold related to locals' focus and the broader sense of being community-centered, especially in terms of classes. People mentioned that with a one-off class, it can seem like, and the people that are participating really seems like out-of-towners that are just popping in. Whereas if it's a series of classes, then it really seems like this is for locals, because locals are gonna be around to show up time and again. Participants also shared they'd like to have more recurring events that they can count on just week to week, like Dylan Amphitheater has Monday free nights. Especially young adults mentioned, "That'd be great if we had something like that, and it doesn't have to be music." We're just saying something that is like casual, a weekly thing that we know that we can count on. It makes scheduling feel easier than having to know and look up. You just know, you know, it's Wednesday, and Breckenridge has this event on Wednesday night. A lot of people thought that that would be an attractive offering. In terms of barriers, the primary barrier to participating more in arts and culture in Breckenridge is lack of information, which was noted by a third of respondents. And kind of across audiences here, you see that that was true for year-round and part-time residents alike, but more so for part-time residents, with forty-two percent of part-time residents reporting lack of information was a barrier. Programming not being of interest was also up there as a barrier, as was cost, especially for year-round residents for both of those. Events not being at convenient times was not the largest barrier among survey respondents relatively speaking, but it was the primary barrier discussed among Spanish-speaking focus group participants. So I wanted to call that out and dig a little bit deeper into that. For the focus groups, the common barriers across audiences were parking cost and lack of information. And for Spanish speakers, as I mentioned, it was really this difficulty with scheduling because of conflicting work hours in hospitality and service jobs that have them working on the weekends usually and make event attendance difficult. They perceived, you know, most events happen on the weekend, and I work on the weekend, so it's a non-starter. Even if I wanted to participate, I couldn't. Another barrier to dig a little bit deeper into is that lack of information barrier, which we saw was the biggest reported in the survey and definitely echoed in the focus groups as a common barrier discussed across audiences. Even participants like patrons who otherwise don't report many barriers, they're highly motivated to overcome any potential barriers that could come up, and they truly prioritize participating in the arts. Even they shared they would appreciate an easier way to access information about events. And then across groups, many reported that they do subscribe to Go Breck and Breck Create in Town of Breckenridge, and they know all the places to look. They know where the information is. They just felt that the information is spread across too many different channels, and it makes events easy to miss. So they wanted a centralized source for arts, culture, and entertainment information across Breckenridge, but ideally for all of Summit County, as some were living right outside of Breckenridge in Summit County. Or they just thought, you know, "I would travel to other places, and I think we should get other people from Dylan and Silverthorne into Breck as well." I wanted to bring that full circle back to the Spanish speakers again about lack of information, that they would like more marketing and outreach in Spanish. However, it was discussed in this group that even print or online marketing materials being offered in Spanish may not be enough, and that word of mouth is really the most powerful way to reach this audience, especially through trusted messengers in the community. It was discussed in the Spanish-speaking focus group, the possibility of identifying community leaders as a type of ambassador that could be more effective than just posting written information. Just having Spanish speakers communicate with each other about cultural and artistic opportunities could result in better promotion and more excitement about an event. Participants, just as a good example of when this has worked, participants shared that Spark was an event that many learned about through word of mouth in the community because it generated so much excitement, and they perceived more Spanish speakers, more of the Hispanic community, to show up for that event because of the excitement that was spread through word of mouth about it. So lastly, we wanted to share perceptions of positive impacts. Eighty percent of respondents agreed that arts and culture in Breckenridge create a vibrant town. Of residents, seventy-three percent believed arts and culture make them happy to live in Breckenridge, as well as, you know, all these other great positive impacts you see here, that a large proportions of survey respondents believed arts and culture in Breck have on the town. It contributes to the economy. It attracts tourism. It improves Breck's reputation. We wanted to end on a high note here with some wins, and lastly, supported by some of the qualitative research as well. Focus group participants felt arts and culture have a strong impact on their quality of life as residents and on the town culture and economy. A patron shares that the arts are a reason that they live here full-time. Business leader shares that driving people to creative areas shows people what makes Breckenridge so authentic and awesome. And finally, a business leader shares that the creative district in Breckenridge and what Breck's done in the last twenty years with that has been one of the best things the town has done, in my opinion. Okay, that was a very high-level and quick run-through of some of the key findings. And I'll pass it back to Kate for some discussion.
Thank you, Catherine. Before we open it up, the questions and discussion, I just wanted to kind of place this research in the broader context of master planning and organizational review, since it sounds like that's something that you're considering next. So this is a tool called the Strategic Tweet Spot. It's a little bit similar to a SWOT analysis. But basically, you would use this tool to help you figure out what is it that your organization, your municipality, et cetera, does really well? That is something that the people that you serve want or need? And that is something that is maybe a little bit difficult for them to find in the current ecosystem in which you exist. So often, this tool is used when trying to figure out what your strategic position is going to be moving forward. And it can be helpful in figuring out what additional information you wanna collect, and how do you make sense of it after you've collected all of that information? So really, today, the research that we have covered falls into this customers and market circle. So really trying to understand what are audiences looking for, what are their needs and experiences? And so with that, I'm gonna go ahead and pause here, because I'd love to hear what questions you have, what reactions you have, if anything was interesting or surprising about the research.
That was a great synopsis. Thank you guys very much for that. Jay, did you have anything to add, since you were sort of the participant in this?
I appreciate that. Yeah, so I was the liaison on the steering committee, and I guess the first thing I wanna say is to praise everyone that was involved. Our steering committee was phenomenal, and they all added to and reviewed every step of this process. So, you know, looking at BCA, the NRO, Breck Film, Backstage, BTO, and Breck History, all of our partners really were integral in this part, from questions to who the focus groups were, to implementation, and even email databases. And so I just think that they did a phenomenal job, and wanna thank you all for being part of it. And then also Kate and Catherine, they took a hundred-and-twenty-page report and jammed it into a forty-five-minute presentation for the steering committee, and then I further asked them to take it into twenty minutes. And I thought they did a phenomenal job, and just wanna say thank you so much for taking, you know, getting a statistically significant survey, you know, and taking into diving deeper with the focus groups, and really coming out with three themes that I saw through this of the desire for community connection, consistency of programming and events, and then finally, communication and having a place where these could be found. And I think this was a phenomenal first step and really encouraged by the work they did.
Awesome. Does anybody have any questions? Any comments?
I guess one question, Jay, since we did have such an engaged steering committee. In the findings, were there any things that points that stood out for the steering committee members?
I think that was, you know, the points that came out were the findings, was in the executive summary. And I think that those were the three things that I took out of it. I'm not sure if Kate has anything that she can add of like, you know, executive summary of the executive summary of like, you know, the points, the key points that come out from here, and if she can add a little bit to it.
Well, no, I mean, you're, I feel like you did a great summary of executive summary of an executive summary and have really distilled it down. I think we, as you saw in the report, one of the great things about having both pieces of data is that the survey really gives you like a broad sense of what proportion of the population of what proportion of the population think X, Y, and Z. But then through the focus groups, we were really able to dig deep and get just a ton of interesting ideas that I think the steering committee can use as like a starting point for exploring some different topics moving forward. So I think that's, I'm hoping that that's kind of what they take out of this research.
I just want to make sure that I'm interpreting it correctly, but it seems like the community is really happy with the arts that are being offered in the community and happy with the uses of most, if not all, of the facilities. And it really, I feel like it could have gone a couple of directions. Either people aren't happy with what's being offered now, and they want changes, or they are happy. And then they're basically saying, and we're willing to have more. Would you say that's the summary of the summary? But they're also interested in having more. Like, we're not, we were, and a couple of years ago, we were at a place where people were sort of happy, but also saying, but please don't have more and maybe even have less. But it seems like we've kind of flipped now. Would you say that's true?
Yeah, I definitely think the results show that people are definitely grateful and happy for arts and culture in Breckenridge. I mean, anytime you're asking people about things that they do in their free time, obviously, they want more of that. So that's why we wanted to do some additional focus group work to kind of understand what that more was. It's interesting that you can kind of see in the data, like, the transition that's occurring because lots of people feel strongly that the arts and culture have all these positive benefits on Breckenridge, but when you ask them, is Breckenridge an arts town? That's still not like a core identity, especially for residents, although in the focus groups, which Catherine could describe more if you want. After conversation, it's just that primarily, they feel like Breckenridge is a ski town, but secondarily, it's becoming a real arts destination, and that's a benefit.
I think they made a distinction too between, are we seen by people on the outside as an arts town versus do I feel like as a resident living here that this is an arts town? And they were much more likely to say the latter, that as somebody who lives here and appreciates the arts, I could see how we could be an arts town. I don't know if that extends to tourists believing that we're an arts town.
Julia, process question. So first of all, this is all incredibly insightful. At the same time, it really highlighted certain things that we know can be improved. The arts are such a positive impact on this community, but we know we can do better. So I am absolutely in moving, in favor of moving forward with a master plan and an organizational master plan. Do you see this being one single RFP? Or is this something that you'd recommend that we break up and separate?
I think if we can get it to be one RFP, but two separate deliverables, would be great to, because then you have one consultant team working on kind of this at the same, maybe they're different, they're different cylinders in the, but they are sort of moving in the same direction. And they're getting that information, I think, in different ways too, in addition to all the individual interviews and research that they're going to be delving into. So I think that would be helpful, but doesn't necessarily have to be, but I think that would be ideal. I want to run that by the steering committee, that idea.
Do you have any comparison, anecdotal comparison data of like, different communities you've done similar projects for and kind of where we sit on that, on that spectrum?
Yes, I mean, some of these questions in the survey are similar ones that we've used in other arts and cultural surveys in different places. I think I mentioned this during the review of the survey results with the Arts and Culture Steering Committee, but one thing that stuck out to me was the barriers for Breckenridge, that lack of information came to the top. Usually, we see lack of time and cost as the two main barriers overall. So it was interesting that lack of information rose to the top for you. In other areas, you know, arts identity, obviously, when we did the cultural, the Arts and Culture Survey in Denver and their cultural plan work, Denver obviously feels strongly about its arts identity, I think more so than Breckenridge. But that's why I noted, it's kind of interesting seeing through the data that transition. I think there are slight differences too in whether communities understand all of the benefits. I think some communities put out more, you know, like advertise different reports on the economic impact of the arts, and that can definitely shape people's perceptions of whether that's a really big benefit or not. I think those are, that's just kind of off the top of my head, some of the key comparisons.
Julia, I have a good process question as well. I know that this was just like very first step, but I am, I do think some great questions came out of it. Do we have like an Excel spreadsheet or something? Because I know some of these were specific that I feel like maybe we can start working on without a whole master planning process. Like, there was at some point a comment that more Spanish instruction in the classes or that free parking made a big difference. I mean, just some of those things that we can probably start working on without a master plan. Are we tracking those, or we're just?
We could summarize, like, any suggestions that came out in the focus groups? Is that what you're asking?
I mean, yeah, I think like, there are going to be so many suggestions that that might be challenging, but maybe for someone who, I don't know whose role it would be, but it might be easier for someone with the town to do it than with the consultants just because maybe you would be more familiar or someone with the town would be more familiar with, here's something that we could work on in the meantime. But I just would hate for all this great information to be in a summary document that sort of basically gets lost when there seems to be a lot of good information we could follow up on. So I don't know what that looks like, but I'd be interested in making sure that we don't lose that.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. And along those lines, I know a lot of the members of our events committee is here, but I think this, these findings would be incredibly insightful for individual event producers that can take some of these key points into consideration.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments, questions?
You know, I'm hearing some kind of takeaways that maybe, you know, the process is going to take a while, right? The master plan. So what are the takeaways that we could start on right away? You know, our business community and many are expressing a desire for some things. And what I'm hearing out of it is, you know, more casual community events. So really try to take a kind of a can-do nimble, small, in-scale type community events. I'm hearing Elevate the Eclipse in the backstage, in the immediate, maybe. We maybe try to give them a little more love and, and, you know, those were the two most popular facilities and seemed very recognizable. So maybe we try to, to get a little more support to those guys and encourage them to do a little more, maybe. Better coordination with the information. You know, I'm not sure how or who to tackle that. But that's something I think we need to look at. And then to activate the Riverwalk Center more. So, you know, so I think, I think all four of these are things that we can act on in the immediate while the process continues. And I'd hate to see us kind of stall out on, on these kind of immediate action items that certainly could be acted on quickly and easily, I think, in the immediate while the process continues.
So I think, you know, some things like maybe coordination of information might be pretty, you know, something that we can start working on. Some things have like programmatic and maybe financial implications that I think if we, if I create, kind of here's, here's some, here's the suggestion list that came out of, out of here and let the organizations sort of respond to that and kind of take that in and what that would, what some of those things would mean and what they can do with that and what their limitations are. I think that would be some good, you know, good process to have for the organizations. Because some of that might be longer-term stuff that, for example, maybe programming some more, a whole lot at the Riverwalk Center, if that's what we're looking at, might take some time to, to plan for, depending on what that stuff is. And so, and we might learn a little bit more in the master planning processes. We gather more information too, like what we want to hear. Because again, like, these focus groups are small, you know, groups of folks. So I think part of it is maybe some low-hanging fruit we can do. If the organizations, I'm not in any other organizations, so, I mean, if they're willing to do that right now. And then the other stuff, I think we'll just, we should give them a little bit of time to kind of react to some of this too. And like, while we're doing the master planning process, which I think we could do for, you know, start fairly quickly. You know, we might be able to start it in January, have the work starting in January. So anyway, those are my two thoughts.
Yeah, I think it's a great start and super supportive of the master planning process. I think it'd be, yeah, just good to have a direction for, you know, for the whole arts community to, you know, over the next ten years, to be able to walk forward and all on the same page. So I think that'll be great. So yeah, super supportive of that. Love looking at the organizational structure as well as funding and just making sure everything's aligned to, yeah, make sure all the entities are supported in the right capacity. So that'll be good. In the short term, kind of to piggyback on what Dick's talking about, would love the concept of looking at the marketing and trying some stuff over the next little bit here while the master planning process is occurring to see, yeah, what can be done on the marketing front. And I think it ties into, in my mind, the ski area, to the BTO, to the events that we've got going on, like, how do we want to market? Is there an opportunity to, and it applies, I think, to the arts district as well, right? Like, how do we want to handle marketing? How do we want to handle events? Is there, you know, structurally, something like at a higher level that we want to have to make sure that we've got marketing and events supported across all those entities? So, yeah, there's a lot of opportunity to put forward to the next bit of this process and the vision that comes out of it. So thank you.
I agree with what everybody has said to this point. The thing that struck me the most is the idea that people would say they have difficulty finding out what's going on, and we ought to be able to sort that out. We have a lot of different organizations, and each organization promotes itself, but somewhere, we need to pull that all together. I also thought it was interesting, my perception was that people weren't asking for things that are expensive to provide. They just want something that's fun to do. And the idea that local people thought isolated events were one-offs for the visitors, and they wanted more things that they could count on. And I would say something my wife pointed out is she'd like to have more painting classes that went for a series of weeks. And so that fit right into that kind of an idea. I think we're moving in the right direction.
No, I think we've invested so much time and resources into this, so we should continue with the process.
So I just want to take a second to recognize, we have a ton of arts org folks who are either staff or board in the, or just interested patrons in the audience today. And we have, you know, a part of this conversation up here, but it's just such a small part. We absolutely appreciate the fact that we're collaborating on this and really look forward to seeing what you all are interested in providing, what our patrons are interested in attending, and really just want this to be a good collaboration. Certainly, the council gets a chance to, you know, actually say something at the table, but we know that you have put countless hours into both this, you know, the steering committee and what we're doing together, but also into your own organizations. And we don't want to appear to have, be, you know, have a better idea of what you all are doing than you do, because you are the experts. And we really look forward to seeing what could come out of this together and through the master planning process. And excited to have this. I think it was great feedback. I think it shows that you're all providing really awesome things for our community and that we're very proud to be working together that way. And then obviously, that we just have a great next few steps outlined to, to give us that community understanding of where we should go next. So really appreciate you attending today, but also realize that this is such a small part of the process. Just don't want to lose sight of that. And thank you, Kate and Catherine. I think you did a fantastic job of getting lots of respondents. It's terrific to see those kind of numbers of people putting in their two cents. Obviously, people are really interested in the arts in our town as well to get that kind of feedback. And really appreciate how you guys were able to put it, distill it down and make it something that we could have some takeaways from.
Thank you.
Anything else, Julia?
No, thank you. Okay, we'll continue.
Okay, great. So I think we'll take a quick break, and then we'll go into our legislative review. Last one, I guess we're ready. We're going to move on to legislative review, and we're going to start with the 2024 IECC Code Adoption Second Reading. Gentlemen.
Afternoon, Miss Mayor, council members and all. I'm going to have Philip take this tea up to you of the new energy code adoption again for us this time around. I've just returned from the Midwest last night, a week in the homeland. I'm oversaturated with broadsome pumpkin pie. We leaner and meter by tonight's session. Philip?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I want to thank you for your time today. Philip Swett, Deputy Building Official here with Rick Fout, our Chief Building Official. In his words, "We are here to tip in the adoption of the 2024 IECC, aka the International Energy Conservation Code." On tonight's agenda for your consideration is the Second Reading for the 2024 IECC Adoption with Amendments. I would like to bring to your attention the attached redline ordinance in your packet that illustrates a few changes we've worked on since first reading. There have been, as Keely called them, some minor edits and changes. We worked on these after first reading as a team effort that included staff, our grant-hired energy code consultant, Sean Mazingo, and our closest core stakeholders that have been present during all of our public outreach sessions, including meetings that took place before, between, and after those sessions. The minor edits include the deletion of some words to provide clarity and consistency between code sections. Additionally, there were necessary changes that weren't mentioned. These were brought to our attention by our energy code consultant and our closest core stakeholders. The minor changes include the deletion of language that added restrictions to all homes with gas within a certain performance pathway. This was a clerical error by the International Code Council, also known as the ICC, at time of print and left up to local jurisdictions to amend out. Additional minor changes and edits include limiting the use of electric resistance heating for occupancy types as defined in the residential section of the 2024 IECC. And we added additional verbiage to allow the code official more flexibility as new technologies become available and above code programs are adopted and or revised. Along with the red line draft of the ordinance, also attached to your packet is the final draft of the complete ordinance for your review. Staff agree with the minor changes and recommend council approve the ordinance as presented. Again, I'd like to thank you for your time and consideration and we're here to answer any questions.
Thanks, Philip. Any questions particularly on those minor changes? Ready to tip this in tonight?
Good.
Ready.
Nice.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Great job getting that across. All right, code amendments for campaign finance compliant with municipal elections.
I'll take this one. Good afternoon, Council. And this is a second reading of an ordinance that will change the code to allow the town to refer campaign finance complaints to the Secretary of State of Colorado per state law. As discussed previously, this ordinance is necessary because we don't, the town does not have the resources or the staffing sufficient to handle campaign finance complaints related to municipal elections on its own. And so the Secretary of State will do that provided we pass an ordinance authorizing it. So that is the second reading. There have been no changes from the first ordinance and any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Thanks, Keely. Questions? Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, into first readings, code, code amendments for liquor licensing.
Hey. Afternoon, Mayor. And Council. Uh, this one's me. So this is mostly a housekeeping item. So up for first reading tonight is a proposed ordinance to amend Title IV, Chapter III of the Breckenridge Town Code to remove references to liquor licensed drugstores. The call, State of Colorado passed Senate Bill 25033, which prevents issuing new liquor licensed drugstores. We have none of these licenses in town limits and we don't have any pending applications for them. So it essentially just removes references and makes our code compliant with current state law. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you.
One step in the right direction to an antiquated code. Thanks to the state.
All right, looks good. Thanks, May.
Thank you.
Next up, municipal court restitution ordinance.
I will be handling this one also. So this is also a cleanup issue. The state law has changed regarding how restitution, when restitution needs to be calculated and ordered by a municipal court judge. And instead of 90 days, it is now 63 days. And there's some additional language that is worked into that, but because our municipal court process follows the, the state, we are changing this to be aligned, to continue to be aligned with the, the state.
Thank you.
Yep.
Questions? All right, we're ready for it. Thank you very much. Onto the US bank lease. Tracy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm here for the first reading for the Fifth Amendment for the US Bank Lease. Uh, history on the bank, they've been renters at the Breck Professional Building since 2006. At the beginning of this year, we started working with the bank to actually have an amendment to change them from a, a gross to a net, sorry, net to a gross lease, uh, which then evolved into them wanting to extend their lease. So according to town code, we then have to come to yourself for that approval. So what they have provo, proposed a lease was originally going through May of 2027. And they have requested to have three years of three options, basically extending it through either 2030 to 2033 and ultimately to 2036. So this amendment is giving them those three times three year options, hopefully keeping them as lessies in the Breck Professional Building through that May 2036.
Great, thanks for that description. Any questions for Tracy?
Tracy, what's the benefit to the town of having a gross lease, lease versus a triple net?
So it basically removes the need for us to do a true up for their common area maintenance. So we did the analysis to understand what were those costs that was built into then their base rent. So this way they have a lot more sort of comfort in knowing that the rent that they are paying is set and there's not going to be a true up after year end of us doing any back charges.
Great. And is our price per square foot or cost per square foot that we receive, is that market, is that competitive within town?
It is. And, and every renter has got a different cost per square foot, especially for sort of like, if you think for nonprofit, they're obviously getting a much more favorable rate versus a for-profit organization. But based on the, the original leases, the square footage has kind of been set and then it's been compounded by usually like a 3% year over year increase. But there is some different rates for each renter, but it, it is all based on market value and what they're using the space for.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'm with Jay. I, I'm confused on why we're going to gross. I mean, how does that benefit? I understand how it benefits them. But I thought most of our leases are triple net, which is the norm in town, in the rental markets in town is triple net. And, you know, it, um, yeah, I'm not sure that benefits us to go gross.
And that's something I can look into the history as to why the change was made and I can come back to you on that.
I would imagine it's staff time of compiling all that and then, and trying to, is that entered into it, you think?
Here he comes.
That was a direction done when we took over administration of the building from a property management group. Our expenses to manage that building are, um, I'd say relatively consistent. Now facilities manages the building for Breckenridge versus outsourcing that was done before. So we think our increase plus what we're covering ourselves on, the, what's the right word, the maintenance of the building, we're covered. So that was the analysis that was done.
Okay.
Yeah. So I think we're, and we do look at it every year just to see if we're, we've been, we've been spot on so far.
Anything else? Are you, are you okay with this?
I prefer triple net, but I'm, I'm following us right on it.
I'm sure that Dave has covered us. Dave assures us he's covered it. All right, thank you. Thanks, Tracy. Okay, moving into planning commission decisions. And anything there? No, great. I'm into managers report. We're gonna go to public projects update. Shannon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In addition to the items covered in the memo, I want to let you know that we plan to start the overflow skier parking lot on McCain in the next couple of weeks. The activity out there.
I had someone ask me what those massive piles were, so it's exactly that.
Are piles of recycled asphalt that we're storing out there that will mainly be used to top the snow storage area.
Okay.
And we're also going to use that recycled asphalt to do the entryways into the skier parking. We're going to leave the skier parking temporarily dirt.
Okay.
And so when you say you're going to start it, that means you're going to start putting people out there, is that?
Start the construction, sorry.
So the construction will entail some of that asphalt and then fencing or something?
We need to grade the school district parcel to facilitate the parking. Much more uneven than you would think. So we have to do all that earthwork, do some drainage work, do driveway cuts for the parking area as well as for the bus turnaround. And we'll be using recycled asphalt in limited areas for the skier parking. But most of it will be applied to the snow storage area in the west because we need a firmer surface to run the haul trucks in the snow storage area.
Got it.
Those piles are on the snow storage, storage area right now. So that's where snow storage should be. The parking is to the north.
Okay, the parking's between the piles and the solar field.
And when we're grading the school district parcel, do we have a good understanding of, because I believe a berm was included in the McCain master plan that we've looked at, right? The open space plan? I'm just wanting to know if we have a good enough understanding to maybe, if we have any extra material to use that material to, uh, leave it on.
Exactly. If we do have access, we will start to shape those berms as suggested in THK plan. We weren't going to purchase any extra material to complete those berms. But as this gets finalized and we feel comfortable, we can start adding material as becomes available to the berms. If that's the direction we move with this parcel. Does that make sense?
And then what kind of material are you going to use to demarcate the perimeter for the parking?
That will be up to the ski area to manage how the parking is delineated. We're going to prep the area for them and if there's going to be any ropes or fencing that will be on the ski area, I'm not quite sure what their plan is at this time.
So if there's not any bermable material and for early season before the snow has started, I would be interested in defining where the open space starts so that people aren't driving. I mean, maybe it'll be really.
It will be obvious. We won't let people drive too far. I think.
People support this every day, Shannon.
We'll, we'll make sure they know where to stop their cars. That is a high bar, but we'll do our best. I, I think we can make it functional without any issues. We'll coordinate with the skier to make sure everything is signed appropriately.
Right. Any questions or comments about either that or the rest of public projects?
I did add some information in there for you, Steve, regarding the road conditions and that mapping tool we use. Did that help answer your curiosities?
Yes, thank you very much.
Shannon, how's Broken Lance proceeding? Are we getting towards the finish line on that?
We are under budget and we remain two to three weeks over schedule. We still plan to get it paved for this season. And there was always going to be a small amount of work that we need to do next year, such as some landscaping and cleanup. So there might be just a few other items that spill into 2027, but we are confident we can get it ready.
That's great. That's a huge project. I, like I said last, me, I just did not appreciate the gravity of how large of a project that is and what you and your team are doing over there. I think it's been painful for the summer for the, the residents and, and for you. But I think it's maybe set them up for success for a long period of time.
Thank you. It'll be a much improved roadway.
That's impressive. Under budget, ahead of schedule.
Behind schedule, sorry.
Behind schedule.
Oh, you're behind.
That backwards, is that why?
No, you said it's.
Over schedule.
2027, I thought, did you mean?
2026.
Okay, so completed this year with some additional landscaping to be done.
2026.
Great, thank you.
All that budgeting has me thinking it's already 2026.
Thank you. Nice work.
Thank you. Any other questions on other projects? Thank you.
Thank you. Mobility.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, one quick add on to the Warriors mark. We, today, we just brought the buses back in there, so we're actually servicing all the stops. Kind of the detour as it was earlier, so that is a very good thing started today and we should be good for the rest of the year on that, so. Good news. Uh, one other bit I wanted to clarify, um, in the ice rink parking numbers, the 160 spaces, those spaces aren't just for overnight parking. Those are also daytime use, so they can be used all day for free. And then at night from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM, they're paid parking. So just wanted to clarify that. I think my note wasn't quite clear, so.
That's great.
Beyond that, I'm happy to take questions.
Questions and then don't forget at the end of this, we do have to talk about the questions in the mobility packet about overnight spaces. Are there questions before we go into whether council supports?
I just clarification question, but overnight, they could leave the car or vehicle there 24 hours a day for up to 14 days. Is that my perception correct?
At the ice rink, that is correct.
Okay, so, um, there are three questions. It's whether we're supportive of the 160 spaces that, as Matt just said, you can use for day use, but that's how many would be available for that overnight for 14, up to 14 days. The next question is 15 spaces of winter overnight parking for oversized vehicles on the school district parcel. Then the third question is the rate question of 25 or $40 per night depending on the day of the week.
And Matt, one question on oversized vehicle parking. Are you aware of other areas that folks with oversized vehicles can park in the county?
Uh, not particularly, no. Town of Vale allows it off the frontage road, but we don't really have a good option other than storage spaces around the county.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody want to kick us off? All right, then I'm just going to call on someone. Steve, how do you feel about those three questions?
Just dialing them up here. I think we should keep the 160 spaces just the way they are. Uh, it looks like that will accommodate what's being lost on Airport Road. The 15 spaces for oversized vehicles. I don't feel strongly one way or the other about that, but I, I know the people that need those spaces feel very strongly about that. So I, I suppose that's fine. And I think the rate, suggested rates are fine.
Okay, so that we get a perspective on how, you know, all the information out in the beginning, do, does anyone want to vote on a different way on any of those so that we have all the perspective out so that we can consider it?
I can go the other way on a couple of those. I'm sorry.
Yeah, please.
You know, when we're looking at our, our community and looking at our residents that live in Blue River and look for a place to park, the, the ice rink is such a huge reservoir for them as well as our guests that come in from, uh, the south, whether it's Colorado Springs or wherever. And I know that typically 160 spaces will not be used overnight for 14 days. But just allowing the possibility of that really depletes available spaces for our guests there. Yeah, I, I just, I don't have a magic number. I feel like 160 is too many. I would really look to you for a more conservative number, number that is maybe close half that or, you know, somewhere in that neighborhood. I just, I don't, I would have a hard time with really occupying that free parking for our, for our skiers that live in our community and the ones that come visiting up from the springs. I also feel extremely strongly about not having overnight spaces on McCain. Uh, I think that we have to a certain extent done a disservice to that, that parcel and parking overnight oversized vehicles west of McCain Access Road would be, I'd be adamantly opposed to. I also think it matters for our residents up in Silver Shekel that have voiced their opinion of, of not having that and having cars there. As far as the rate, I'm actually okay with that.
Thank you.
I can go next. I'm a bit of a hybrid, so on the first question, I'm fine with that. It seems like we had 45 at most, so it would be limited at 160 or 80. I don't think it would make much of a difference, much of a difference, and I defer to you, Matt.
The second question on McCain, I agree with Jay for all the reasons, and the. Final one, the rates sound good to me.
Yeah, I'll jump in. Yeah, I like the rates. Those are good. Yeah, I'd like to not see. The parking on west of the access road, similar to what Jay was saying, and then, yeah, agree on, on the ice lot with Jay as well. I wonder. You know, is there an opportunity at those rates with the parking structure, you know, and, and I don't quite have the data and. The understanding of the nights when the parking structure isn't used, but is that maybe a better location? You know, there's a lot of workforce that use that free lot to get to work and on the hill, and so I'm reluctant to have too many overnight spots there, so. Thanks.
I agree with Todd and Jay. I might just add, it's not just people from the south using ice rink. It's also people to the east. You know, all that workforce housing up Boris Pass Road tends to use that lot as well.
I guess I'd modify this a little bit. I really don't want the parking on McCain either, but. I understand from Matt and from other discussions that it's a real sore point for a lot of people in the community, and I don't know where else we put them. That is any better.
I don't love the McCain solution, but I do think we need fifteen spaces for oversized vehicles, and I. Don't know that I have a better idea unless they can be accommodated at the ice arena or in the. Gold Run parking lot in some way. I mean, that parking lot is rarely full. In the winter.
At the Nordic Center.
What about the east side of the access road without disturbing any historic rocks? Where there was a bunch of parking?
That might interfere with public works.
Certainly don't want to mess with public works. Stand out of those crosshairs.
Hey, if you don't mind, just shrink a little more.
Scoot over?
About the others?
Um, fine and fine. Yeah, I'm good on one and three.
Okay. I'm supportive of the hundred and sixty spaces. I guess I feel the same as these guys, but I, I'm hoping that. We could monitor the situation, and if it seems like that's. There are too many spaces that are full all the time because people are leaving their cars there. Only because my understanding is there are like forty-five there now. There's twenty or so, so it's really. Far fewer than the one sixty, but I do completely sympathize with that. That ice rink parking feels like it's full a lot, so. I just don't have a good enough understanding of. What those overnight vehicles will do there. And I do not support the fifteen overnight spaces on McCain for all the reasons that have been stated. And so therefore I don't. I'm fine with the rate, but I'm not sure that matters. Is there an interest to see if there's fifteen spaces anyplace else? I mean, the, the point is we don't agree with it on McCain, right? It's not that we don't agree with accommodating it in the town. But.
Them taking up room at the ice.
No, or at the ice rink, right.
An even worse.
It's so programmed, yeah. So I don't know if, if the staff can come up with anything else or if we're just not going to provide that, but not on McCain and not at the ice rink, it sounds like.
I'd like Marika's idea, at least to look at. I mean, let, let the data, the staff. You know, Matt and his team take a hard look at the data and. You know, it's the least of evil situation, so what's, what's the evil on Gold Rush, you know? So that's, I think it's worth looking at.
Gold Run, I want to clarify. Gold Run, she mentioned, not Gold Rush.
Pardon me?
At the Nordic Center.
Oh. I'm saying Gold Rush, or I think Gold Runs could be.
Okay, but we'll just let staff figure out if any of those options are. Artwork, really?
We'll look into it.
Sound good?
Yeah, sounds great.
Okay. Oh, we also have one more.
Oh, yeah.
So we've got this name of the Peak Six Shuttle Lot. Someone here named it that, so don't be too harsh if you don't like it.
The only thing I'd suggest with that is putting the word free in there just to make, make it clear and call it the Peak Six Free Shuttle Lot. But. I like the designation.
Is there value in, I'm assuming the shuttle goes from there to the Gondola and having some sort of connectivity there, so. As I think through it. The Peak Six makes me think I'm going to Peak Six. So I worry about, is there a way to name it to connect like free? Parking shuttle to Gondola and somebody that does words better than I do makes it shorter. That's my two cents.
I don't have a better idea.
Yeah, anybody else?
All right, so this is. Kind of plays off a little bit of a comment that I made maybe a month or so ago when we were talking about. Or when I brought the naming of the McCain parcel. And this has been discussed for probably a couple of years now at Open Space, if I remember correctly, Duke. Is that, you know, naming it after the previous landowner kind of does a disjustice to our community. And maybe in the spirit of piloting a name to see how it feels and trying it on. Open Space had recommended the name Little Daisy. This was something that it's after a mine in, in town, and it is, it's something that. The Open Space Advisory Committee, when Duke was chair, had flushed that out and, and voted on, and. Due to the, the leadership at the time, it, it didn't get passed forward, but just wanted to perhaps broach that subject now of seeing if we. What we thought of the Little Daisy lot and, and that's with the understanding that. Part of naming it Peak Six was to provide some geographic location for our guests, and I appreciate that, and I understand that. This was just, you know, throwing out another idea that had been embedded and perhaps trying it on to use in, in the future for whether it's the road or the, that area. When we do the open space improvements.
Matt, do you need a decision from us?
No.
I mean, I'd like to see maybe a couple other ideas. I think Steve's point of free sounds great. If you were to add it to Free Little Daisy Shuttle or however.
Free Little Daisy to Gondola.
Yes.
Parking to Gondola Shuttle. Yes, so we'll just ask staff to maybe.
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Jay, I love Little Daisy. I would rather see the Open Space named Little Daisy, though.
Well, I guess that it's, it's a feeder name. Hopefully it'll lead to more things, so.
Maybe you can run it by Open Space. How about that, BOSAC?
We'll look into it.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Matt. All right, sustainability? All on your own, Jesse.
Indeed. Mayor and Council, good afternoon. I have nothing. Further to add specifically to the memo, but I did have a couple other updates that did not make it into the packet. The ice rink solar has been completed and is energized, so that system is back up and running, and it hasn't been in a few years. We've repurposed those panels. We're going to be able to use them to replace some of the damaged panels at the golf course that keep getting hit with golf balls. As well as replace a couple in the solar gardens that need replacement, and then we're also kicking around some ideas to. Provide solar on the Fiber Hut and perhaps the data center up on Wellington, so great opportunity to repurpose those panels. In addition, we will have the Mountain Town's Climate Summit before your next meeting, so that takes place October seventh and eighth. The town of Breckenridge was nominated and is a finalist in two award categories. One for Collaboration of the Year as part of the Mountain Community Coalition. As well as Community of the Year for the Breck E-Delivery Program, so that ceremony will be. October eighth at the end, at the conclusion of the summit. And then finally, just an update that we were selected to present on the e-delivery at DOLA's Small Community Workshop on October sixteenth at CMC. This is a workshop for statewide communities that have a population of less than ten thousand, so we'll share our experience with those groups. That's all I have. Happy to answer questions.
Great, questions?
That's great on the scholarships for Mountain Town twenty thirty.
Yeah, so what went from a couple scholarships is now we've invited just about every Summit County student available to come meet with. Not just, well, the scholarship was to attend the summit, but also we're inviting Summit County youth to participate in meeting the Montana Climate Youth Activists who are. Part of the keynote speakers on day one, and so it'll be a good opportunity to have the different youth groups meet and talk about climate future. Hope they don't sue us. Don't either. Thanks, Kelly.
All right, any other questions for Jesse?
All right.
Thank you. All right, we didn't have a housing packet, but do we? Have anything? Okay. Open space. Welcome, Duke.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The minutes from the meeting, the BOSAC meeting, September fifteenth are in your packet and take questions on those or anything else. Open spaces.
I have a question. On the clear cut on Barney Ford, we had worked with the Nature Conservancy on building fences to see how the Aspens would take. Is there any scheduled follow-up or how has that been going?
I think it's been going well, but we, we've been working on, yeah, they, they called that an exclusion to keep. Animals mostly and people out of the Aspen groves, so we need to work more with the Nature Conservancy to kind of figure out next steps, but it's been successful. It just needs more attention. You're right.
The mini mine ghost structure discussion, the vote was split on that. Tell me a little bit more about both sides of the coin there.
Well, the, it was more, that what was proposed by Breck History was not necessarily the ghost structure, but for this summer. To go up the mini mine trail with a spider crane and organize all the materials there. Take an inventory. So to figure out what could be done in a restoration project and then maybe provide some protection. Some of the stuff's getting. Affected by water running underneath it. You could use some of the metal roofing to protect from the elements from above. But the concern. With BOSAC was, well, that's a bunch of impact. For something that we don't, you know, the next step that we're not sure if we're supportive of. So that, Jay, please elaborate, but the, the discussion was more, we don't want to commit to this without having a restoration project that we all feel good about. Because there's still impact even in just the organizing and inventorying of the materials. So that was what, where BOSAC was split, not necessarily on the ghost structure.
Got it. So it was on the step before.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
And they requested alternative restoration project to the ghost structure, you know, to have some other things to think about and. Maybe if there's something that had broader support, then they would be more supportive of this first step of organizing and inventorying the materials.
Got it. So is it then Breck History's charged to come back with some other ideas?
Yes.
Cool. Thank you.
And just to add a tiny bit to that, is that we were talking about what, what the, the Open Space Fund should support with their contribute monetary contribution. It wasn't necessarily a recommendation to council of what to support and what not to. It was that we had budgeted X amount of money and wanted to apply it to specific projects, and the mini mine just fell. For all the reasons Duke said, down to the bottom of that.
So basically, BOSAC was saying, hey, hey, we don't think open space funds should be invested in that project.
At this point, in the way that it was presented.
Okay, but it didn't necessarily comment on whether or not the project itself. Has efficacy, is that?
So I'll just add, after the, after the BOSAC discussion, I talked with Mark this morning and recommended that. Larissa, go back and do the work that BOSAC was looking for before we come and bring that project even to council.
Cool. Awesome.
indicating that you all would have a similar response to that, but if you feel differently, we can adjust.
I think it was pretty split, the way it was, so.
Yeah, be good to beat it up some more. Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, Duke.
Thank you.
All right. Maybe reports, there was a liquor and marijuana licensing authority. Okay. Um, financials.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you have the report that comprises the first eight months of twenty twenty five. August is reflective of July sales tax collections. Overall, we're approximately one point seven percent of our twenty twenty five year-to-date budgeted revenues. And three hundred thousand behind prior year. Sales taxes ahead a hundred thousand in comparison with our budget and behind four hundred thousand in comparison with prior year. Accommodations tax is behind a hundred thousand in comparison with our year-to-date budgeted revenues and behind three hundred thousand in comparison with the prior year. Real estate transfer tax is ahead one point six in comparison with our year-to-date budget and ahead seven hundred thousand in comparison with prior year. As for our net taxable sales year-to-date as of July of twenty twenty five in comparison with July of twenty twenty four, we're ahead three point three two percent. If we look at the month of July as a standalone, it came behind six point four four percent. We did see unfavorability in all of our categories. And I'm going to briefly mention construction, which has a year-to-date unfavorability of three point two nine percent. However, there is some larger fluctuations from month to month, and this is mainly due to one of our larger sales tax payers and the inconsistency of the filing of their sales tax returns. We're currently working on education and communication to get that stabilized in order to produce more consistent reporting on this category. Retail in town was behind six point seven three percent in comparison with July of twenty twenty four. Retail out of town was behind twelve percent in comparison with July twenty twenty four. Real estate transfer tax continues to trend, trend strong. The month of August came ahead a quarter of a million dollars in comparison with the prior year. Again, mainly due to single-family sales that comprises thirty-eight percent of our collections. I did add the report as well for the BTO, which gives us a sneak preview of what August occupancy and ADR was. And I'm happy to take any questions before I pass it on to Tracy.
Questions for Pam?
Good afternoon again. So you have in the packet the financial statement for August, and before you get too excited. And looking at the revenue favorability of three point seven million and favorability in expense twenty-two. Let me just sort of step back and kind of level set a little, just to put it in a. More of a discussion point. So originally, when we did the twenty twenty five budget, we had initially proposed a loss of twenty million, just rounding up. But the one thing that you'll notice in the August financial statements, the term of phasing in their lot as the explanation of why we have favorability. Which we're going to see that sort of play out throughout the remainder of the year. So when we did the twenty twenty five projection during the budget review. We're really looking to have a net loss for this year of only four million, which is sixteen million favorable to what we. Initially said when we did the original budget, the adopted budget of twenty twenty five. So high level, if we look at what does that live in, revenue, we're really looking at for year-end of favorability of about two million. Obviously ebbs and flows across the board in many different things, but really two different areas. The one was the, the one point one million that we got in for the Colorado River agreement for the utility fund. And then we have about a million favorability in investment income. And of course, I'm not going into the minutia, but just talking big picture. For expense. For expenses, we're really looking at favorability of about thirteen point seven million by year end. And the majority of that is living within our minor capital expenses. So when you really look at the, the fund balance of all funds, net of transfers, that's where most of that favorability is residing, is within minor capital and charges for services. It's kind of high level. So I'd rather you focus on more of the year end of having only a net loss of fourteen million, which is definitely favorable to where we started off with a adopted budget of twenty million, rather than what you're seeing is really phasing that will play out for the rest of the year.
Too bad. Tracy?
Sorry.
Anyone have any questions?
Sorry to burst the bubble.
Fantastic explanation. Thank you.
Yeah. That's great. Thank you very much. All right, communications. Hopefully everyone's seeing some of the hilarious new stuff on.
Mayor and Council, the memo is in the packet and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Helen.
Helen, did you and your team, did you discuss any of the survey results from the Arts and Culture Survey that we got? Like, has that made it back to, to kind of talk about some of the findings?
No, we, we saw it as part of the packet, but we haven't been part of those conversations.
Do you expect to talk about that?
Possibly.
As far as the communication has.
Yeah, traditionally, the communication for all of the arts has lived within the arts groups. And we really haven't been involved for a variety of different reasons, but that is something we could consider in the future. We actually did have a bit of a discussion about that, what that might look like in the future for us.
Very cool. Thank you.
I think Julia alluded to in the arts master planning that there'd be an initial additional round of community engagement. So I hope they reach out to you because you, your team really are the experts in reaching our community. So I hope they maybe ask you for input and tips.
Yeah. Just, I did want to call out that our Breck Roads updates with the Talking Moose. So typically, we get maybe four people paying attention to those. When we started with the Talking Moose, we had, you know, over fifty views right away and then twenty people shared it, which I thought was kind of funny because Breck Roads is, you know, that's our, that's our communication about construction and it's pretty bland. But when you put it in a more fun format, people might pay attention.
Simple folk.
Are.
Yeah, it was definitely fun. I, I was sent it. I was, someone must have shared it with me.
Perfect.
Thought it was great.
We'll continue to try to be creative.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Do we need to have a break?
No.
Okay. All right, we are moving into review of budget fee and schedule and FTEs. Budget, fee, schedule and FTEs.
Good afternoon again. This is the first time that we've actually carved out the twenty twenty six proposed fees and the headcount summary. The reason of taking this out of the discussion during the budget is really to allow more time for each leader to speak to their fee changes and give the time for that conversation and, and discussion. During today, this would not be considered for adopting the fees or the headcount. It's more of a review session for discussion and we will truly be adopting any changes that come out of the discussion today as part of the budget adoption on October fourteenth. So we will have the, the time as we go through each of these fees for the leaders to come up and speak specifically to the changes to open that discussion. But I did just want to jump over and talk about the staffing overview, because that's really just a small component and I want to give more time for the folks behind me to, to speak specifically. You'll see that there's a comment in the memo that really talks about the staffing changes that we are proposing for twenty twenty six. One of them is a reclass of one point three three heads that primarily live within the accommodation unit compliance for our community service officers. We are realigning that or reclassing that back under public safety. And that's really just to correctly reflect where they, where these folks are really spending the majority of their time is supporting the public safety as a whole, rather than specifically what that would be considered more the accommodation compliance. There is one additional retiree that has been added to the health con, healthcare benefit fund. And then truly the new head that has been added is for a proposed new deputy attorney. That will be a new head in the twenty twenty six budget is only really reflected for point seven five heads because we are not anticipating that starting until after April. When you look at the, how this rolls up under the budget, the expense for personnel grows by about seven hundred thousand. That incorporates merit increases and of course, really this just one new head that is being added. But if there's no questions on staffing, I'll turn it over and kick it off to Pam.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. On the memo, we have added some addition of finance fees. The first one being the real estate transfer tax exemption administrative fee of fifteen dollars, as well as increasing the five dollar paper filing fee to fifteen dollars. These fees are to cover the time and the additional costs related to the administration of these processes. Do you have any questions?
Pam, I'm a speed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Then we're moving on to community development for the planning permit application fees.
Thanks, Tracy. We have traditionally on our planning fees done a three percent increase per year to kind of adjust for inflation. At one point in time, we indexed that off of the CPI, Consumer Price Index, but that would fluctuate a fair amount. But in reality, looking at it, on average, it's about three percent a year. At least that's what we found. So that's a reason that the planning fees are the way they are with the three percent increase. Building fees are adjusted in a different way. There is not an annual change to those. It's based on valuation, so it kind of gets addressed in a different way.
Any questions on this one?
Mark, do you know if our fees in general align with most of the other mountain communities in our competitive set? Have we ever done a nexus on that?
We did, Jay, a few years ago and they're pretty fairly in line. You know, our closest that we look at is Summit County's fees and they're pretty close to Summit County's fees at that time. I'll be honest, we haven't looked probably in four or five years.
Anything else on this one? Okay. Thanks, Mark.
The engineering department is proposing a three percent increase in the right away permit, similar to the community development inflationary cost. And we also are requesting to implement a fee for our infrastructure permits. We implemented this permit a few years ago without a fee and we would like to consider charging for those services to recoup some of the staff time.
Shannon, can you explain what exactly that is or what it covers or?
I'm giving runway as an example, the work they're doing out there right now in utilities and the roadways comes through our department for review of those civil plans. So there's the review time and then there's the inspection time out in the field to make sure that those installations are following code.
Thank you. This makes sense.
So with the infrastructure permit, would that be applicable to a single family home that needs to put in?
Pretty subdivision work, so much more large scale. And then once in a while, if there's a big utility associated with a more singular project, we would do it in a structure permit. I don't think we've ever done one on a single family home.
Perfect. Thanks.
Okay. Looks like we're good with that. Thank you.
Moving on to recreation.
Good afternoon, everyone. So for the most part, our philosophy was to try to leave local rates alone this year. We, we really just kind of put some nominal fee increases forward at the ice rink and then for Carter, Carter Park for, again, non-locals, non-residents. Gold Run and Breck Nordic Center and Frisco Nordic have operated under a long, long time MOU. Look at Marika because her and I worked on that years and years ago. So they, every year, they all three meet and just mutually agree to their fee increases. So that's why there's all the red. Those, all those fees are the same at all three areas. And they left the Summit Youth Pass price alone. But other than that, that's kind of the overview for all of our areas.
Thanks, Kevin. We have questions on these?
Kevin, do you remember the last time the Nordic fees increased?
Two years ago or three years ago. They haven't increased for two years.
I guess I was looking at those two, the Gold Run passes, the season passes for residents. There are somewhat significant jump of almost, or I think a little more than twenty five percent. If we do have control within our MOU, I'd love to see that not quite a seventy five dollar jump.
Okay. I'll look into that. Is agreed upon with all three and, and the, the thing is, is that we, any of, of the areas will collect the money for that and then we're responsible to a third, a third, a third.
Okay, so there is a really wiggle room, these is what I'm.
What's that?
Understanding. So there's not wiggle room with these season pass prices? Okay.
Not really.
I mean, we could if we didn't take a third, right?
Potentially, yes.
I don't know if others don't feel the same way. I thought that was just a pretty significant jump for residents.
I did think those few jumps were pretty high.
Okay. Let me see.
I know, I know.
Yeah, you know, Marika. Things to consider. Thank you.
Kevin, is Tennis a self sustaining department as far as do they cover their costs or their revenue?
No. They do not. I am working on cost recovery right now for our next session, but Ice, Nordic, Tennis, none of them recover the expenses. The Rec Center's right at about breakeven.
Thank you.
Others?
Could we make up for reduced Nordic rates with overnight parking?
I like it.
Or when you say it, then I say it, Todd. So that was good. That's how we got there.
Good idea.
Yeah.
I noticed that there's no family pass to the Rec Center.
So what we do with, with, with families, I'll just use mine as an example. If I purchase a full price pass for six, it's six month and twelve months. If I purchase full price pass, then my spouse would get twenty five percent off of whatever rate she falls under, which would be adult. And then kids would get twenty five percent off of their rate, so the, the youth rate. So that's, that's basically how we sell family, couple passes, that sort of thing. Six and twelve much, twelve month passes.
All right, anything else on the Rec Center stuff? Fees?
Appreciate maintaining the, the resident rate for the majority of it. I think that was really important and should be recognized, so. Thank you.
All right.
We've got utility next, so we'll have James and Pam.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. This, the rate increases that you see before you for twenty twenty six budget are set by ordinance. So those increases hopefully are self explanatory in just a few bullets that are like laid out there. As, as that last sentence in there indicates that these fees will revert back to five percent increase in twenty twenty eight. However, as I previously mentioned, I believe even at the last meeting, we are going to undergo a water rate study to understand better how we do fit into our comp set. And if we do need to come back with a recommendation to maintain those increases moving forward, I'd be happy to take any questions on the rates themselves.
Questions for James?
James, okay, go ahead. No, you first. James, with respect to the last comment that you made, the, the increase fee is going to sunset. Is that going to be detrimental to our expense of the water system?
Potentially, but, but our goal is just to come back in front of this body well before we get to that twenty twenty eight budget adoption and have that discussion with everyone.
That's what I was heading for, that maybe we should stay ahead of the curve on that and see how we're doing heading into that. Not just get there and figure it out.
Thank you. Yeah, that, again, that is the plan and part of doing the study. Next year with the goal of completing it by the end of the year is we'll probably, you know, be around in the first part of twenty twenty seven to start that discussion.
Yeah, same thought on just staying ahead of it. And when I look at these rates, certainly appreciate having a price increase and the capital coming. Often wonder like, yeah, what is, what is an extra dollar for, you know, a thousand gallons over ten thousand gallons result in, in, and how does that kind of impact that capital line down the road? So I'd be supportive of higher amounts on there.
James, where does the majority of our resident base fall in? In the segments of zero to three thousand, three thousand to ten thousand and then greater than ten thousand? Where, in what bucket, if you will? Would our, the majority of our residents fall into our workforce?
I'm, I'm drawing a, a bit from memory, but when we adopted these new rates and kind of went through some of the changes in twenty twenty four, we looked at kind of where that, that kind of that threshold or where the majority of our water was being consumed, if you will. And I think the three thousand mark previously was five thousand approximately per month. Because if you recall, we did bimonthly billing and we did ten thousand gallons. And so just easy math that that was approximately a thousand gallons per month. But when our, we had a consultant, it was Raftellus, again, if you recall. We, we really leaned into this, you know, to this very, you know, where is that mark at? And I believe we had like seventy, seventy five or seventy eight percent of our customers lived inside of that three thousand mark. And that's really what resulted in kind of picking that number. And then as far as, as far as the, the balance of, of the customers in above three thousand, I'm not able to recite off the top of my head what that percent, those percentages were.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, James.
So moving into golf next, please.
So golf, pretty much the same thing, just some incremental fee increases that have been part of the. Assumptions in the overall five year plan for the last few years. So again, trying to keep local rates left alone. And the philosophy that Grant and I have kind of come up with at golf is that. We we really want to kind of stay right behind the our competitors here in the county Keystone and and the Raven. We feel like we've got a really good balance right now of we're staying extremely busy. There's days that there's literally zero tee times available. But we feel that the changes that we've made over the last couple of years, our locals are getting their their playing golf. We're not hearing complaints about I can't find a tee time and so forth. So that's kind of the philosophy here. Just incremental on the rack work rack rate, which Shannon and I still haven't discussed. That that's really not the right word, but it's our retail non discounted price rate that we want to increase, basically. Oh, and we want to lower the nonprofit rate from eighty dollars to fifty dollars. So that those tournaments that we've just went through, five of them in the last six weeks. So that those nonprofits are making a little bit more money per player because we're the the golf course is very healthy right now.
That's great. Yeah, I really support that decision. That seems to me to play right back into the hands of the community and the local. People here. So I think that's a great idea.
I also applaud the course for taking on as many as you do. You do a lot of those tournaments in the air. It's awesome.
They're fun, though.
What is the junior realm age cutoff?
Seventeen? It's seventeen.
I also applaud that rate. That's that's phenomenal.
It's not on here, but it is seventeen and under.
Anything else?
They're nothing but the best. Nothing but positive comments. So.
We'll bring a season recap sometime before the end of the year.
Great. All right. Thank you very much for that.
Yep.
There are no changes to the cemetery fee, so move into mobility or parking.
Parking. Mayor and Council, the two bullets, first one is memorializing the free parking during the summertime. When the town can set the parking rate at South Gondola. And the second one is was kind of nixed this evening already. But runway, the oversized where we move, if we were going to move it to the McCain property. This would be that new fee recommended. If we do come up with a new idea or new location, that'll be the recommended fee.
Questions for Matt?
It appears to me in looking at the month, the month figures that you've been giving us on parking. That the free parking on the South Gondola garage really activated that space. And I think that was a good decision by the council. I voted against it to start with, but it seems to have played out. Do you see that as affecting? The maintenance, the just the use of that facility if we continue with the free parking in the future?
Yes, but I I think at some point we can have that discussion about if we need to start charging a smaller fee. To keep up with the maintenance on the parking structure. But no, I don't I don't believe it's hurting it anymore than it, you know, it's meant to be parked in. So. Thank you.
So the intent is it would stay free in the summer and then it would be eighteen, well, whatever the.
The ski resort sets that rate in the winter and that is initially what they proposed. That's not set in stone by them yet. You believe that's what it is.
Yeah, I was curious on some of the the rates and Jay, remember some previous discussions on parking rates, right? Like we've got this balance of like, where do we want folks parking versus like making sure folks can get out and ski? And that it's, you know, we're a ski town, right? So curious as we look at these rates, you know, certainly appreciate the rates for the 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 structure, right? And my intent here is that the structure is full as often as possible. And it's also my intent that folks that are skiing all day aren't taking up spots that could serve businesses like in the Tonopah Lot or the Ice House Lot or on Main Street, right? So I don't want, you know, I want folks to be able to pop in, get some donuts and and free that up. Some more folks can get donuts, right? So I wonder, as I look through some of these lots, I don't know what the right cutoff is or if there even should be a cutoff. But in that five to six hour zone, there's a bunch of bunch of lots where if you were paying attention to the rates. There's no way you would park in the structure. You would absolutely go park Tonopah, Ice House, Wellington and a few others. And so I just I wonder if that's worth a consideration there. Again, with the intent of filling up that that structure, having folks stay in that structure. So that traffic is is less and there's less shuffling. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on that or.
I do, but I, you know, I think that's up to you to to tell us what you'd like to do. We it is a very cheap way to park on Main Street for three hours to go skiing. And that that has been kind of a a goal of the council. So.
Yeah, and I think where I was looking is like more the five, six hours and yeah, I I I certainly want to want to have that. Yeah, I want that. I want both, right? Structure full, folks can go ski, it's affordable. You know, and they can go about your day, but also not have full day skiers taking up spots that could serve our business. So.
I'd recommend that we come back with some data on parking patterns.
Cool.
We can look at how often we have people that are parking five and six hours in some of those areas. And then staff can make a recommendation to if we could, if we need to make a change or if we should make a change. And though this is adopted within the budget, we can also make changes outside of that process if we need to. So we'll bring that back to you.
That sounds fantastic. Thank you. Thanks for the good work, Matt.
Good?
Great.
Thank you.
So there's no change in the fees for sustainability or the accommodation unit compliance fees. These fees and the proposed headcount will be part of the discussion in the budget retreat. Where we will be truly asking for an adoption. This is just a review. So any changes or recommendations that have been discussed will be incorporated in that retreat session. Hopefully it's cut down some of the time.
Thank you.
Kelly. Could I just throw an idea out so the rest of council could have a couple of weeks to think about it? And then when we do have the discussion, then we could. And I'm not looking for a decision today, just a consideration over the next couple of weeks. And maybe you guys can tell us how much it would cost. Just I'm I'm thinking about incentivizing commercial composting is my motivation for bringing this up. What if we? For the dumpster? You know, for the enclosure replacement fee or the, I forget what the heck we're calling it. But the, you know, the the material management fees, that's where I'm looking. Got it right in front of me. And if we allowed businesses that are commercial, and this would be my business, but it's not, this isn't personally motivating. It's really about trying to increase commercial composting when you have space on your own site to do it. What if if people that are doing that at their own expense, a hundred percent and right now? Had the ability to present receipts for what they're paying for their own commercial composting? And have that offset the material management fee? That they're also paying in addition to full rates to Timberline. So I just throw that out for the rest of council to consider it as as a incentive. You know, this is a positive approach to trying to get people to compost more businesses as, you know, incentivizing it. And having a bit of an offset of the financial burden for doing such. So just throw it out for. This having us to think about over the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
So before we move on, are there any other projects or programs that we talked about already? Or that we haven't talked about yet that you want to make sure are part of the budget discussion? Or projects that you want us to put on our list of things to bring to you that don't have to come with the budget? But I'm really thinking to make sure that we're well prepared for the fourteenth. And so if you have any particular items that are of interest, you feel like you're going to want more information on. I'd love to know so that we can make sure we bring you what you need.
I think one that I'm curious about is on the accommodation unit compliance fees. Is there, you know, something that allows for us to apply like the inflation index to those? Because certainly since twenty twenty three, there's been inflation and yeah, how does how does that fee change over time? And how do those costs get measured? And yeah, is it as simple as tying it to the CPI? And that's what creates the new rates or what keeps it those dollars relevant and current in today's present dollars?
We can talk about that.
Cool. Thanks.
Does your question include CIP, Shannon? I'd love for us to consider or at least look at. Possibly moving the the South Main, South Park, Main Roundabout, big number, right? Two hundred thousand, I believe, to start planning it. I I'd like to for us to ta- take our staff to kind of present us with any ideas to possibly fit that in. With the planning money, I'd love to see it in twenty twenty six to start that planning right away. Realizing that it's like it's realistically a three year lead time before we could actually build the thing. Due to land acquisition and Shannon jump in or or, you know, just you can talk about it in our retreat in a couple of weeks. But I I'm just. The time, but how difficult it is. And I see a lot of my employees coming from the south, showing up late on busy days because of just the congestion. At our south entry to town. And also on top of that, looking at the Colorado Springs market is the fastest growing market in the state. We are the closest resort to Colorado Springs. So so I'm looking at it from a guest standpoint as well as a workforce standpoint. Because we do have a lot of workforce that come in from the south. So. Just feeling a need to 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 look at that infrastructure project as something, is it at all possible to fit it in? In the cadence that it'll take to get it done. So something to think about.
Yeah, I think it'd be, Dick encouraged me to think more about this. And I definitely think just knowing that at the south end of town, there is some level of. You know, redevelopment and master planning, it would be nice to know. Based on that traffic study, what we're dealing with down there. Because I know that as long as I've been on council, we haven't looked at it. Other than just to say it's challenging. So it'd be nice to know, I think. What we're dealing with down there, since we do know we have congestion down pretty significantly.
Nate, when we were looking at the F lot parking structure, we looked a lot at that area and traffic circulation and what we would need for Roundabout. So I think we can bring some of that past discussion back and just get some feeling from you all. On whether or not you think moving it up is a good idea and then we can make that adjustment.
I think I'd also love to, I don't know what the right way to do this, right? Is like as we think about some of the BTO metrics and sales tax metrics is like what sort of investment? Have we made in the past in BTO and BCA and and other kind of brand strengthening, improving? Investments as well as visitation and like, is that number, does it need to change? How does it need to change? And and thinking through that like brand visitation piece with the infrastructure piece and just making sure. Because to me that, if all that's cranking along, then that is the machine that drives the opportunity to invest in other. Parts of the community, like, you know, all the amazing stuff going on at rec and all the hard work and sustainability. And so just looking at that a little bit would be amazing. Thanks.
Mike, have one more? Sorry. And and this kind of is spurred a little bit from our first discussion and kind of what's the low hanging fruit that we can do? To to support our business community and support the arts community and our community in general. Who I think are asking in many ways, how can we bring more life, more events? You know, to to strengthen the brand to Todd's thoughts. We are in a flat period economically and our, I think our business community somewhere, some. Elements, the business community are getting hit quite hard and others are doing okay. So to try to respond to them and is there some low hanging fruit that we can can? Attack or, you know, really try to 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 address immediately. I'd love to consider a fund. Called a war chest. It's called an opportunity fund. For this winter. I'm thinking in the range of two hundred to three hundred thousand to give us the opportunity to. Collaborate with the Skieria. The Skieria has announced that they intend to to do a lot more events this winter. They've also expressed an interest in collaborating with us and bringing these events into town. I think our business community has expressed a desire to have more happening in town. I spoke with John Copeland the other day and he expressed things like live music and and rail jams and things like that here in town. Which I I think it's all kind of looking to come together. It's just that funding piece. And I'd love to create a fund. Doesn't have to be spent. But it's called an opportunity fund and something that we can pull the trigger on very quickly when an opportunity came up. So a bucket of money in the two to three hundred thousand dollar range to to take advantage of some of these opportunities going down the road. To collaborate and is it Skieria, is it BTO, is it BCA, is it something that we don't even know about yet? So one more to consider and now I'm done.
That could. The National Brotherhood of Snow Sports came and met with Shannon and I and they will probably have a similar request. So just that partnership funding would probably be a great thing for us to know if we have anything that we could. You know, activate quickly and that'd be helpful.
Put it on the list. Anything else?
All right, we better wrap that up before we have any more ideas, spend any more money. Thank you all very much.
Do we still have that?
I think we'll just go right into the runway neighborhood deed restriction. Because that one's one that we definitely want to get through today and then we do have to end at four forty five so we can go to the open cutting.
Be raised in those fees while.
The snowy skate park.
As fast as you want me to.
I don't know, just.
Mayor and Council, I am here to discuss the deed restriction and lottery criteria for the runway. Is that better?
Okay. Thank you.
I'm here to discuss the deed restriction, what we think to be kind of the finalized format of the deed restriction. That we've been working on for about the last year. We have come to council several times, BSAC and the work group as well. It's largely based off of the previous deed restrictions that we have recorded. And just kind of with some specific things that are going to be unique to runway. That I would just kind of like to highlight. Ownership of other properties, income caps, light deed restrictions and ADUs. And then the school district right of first refusal priority that we have. So after. So after conversations and kind of meeting with BSAC, town council, the work group, we kind of generated what we think is the, you know, appropriate draft of the deed restriction. Just kind of in those areas that we have highlighted, the income caps. We had received feedback that that would be just for the townhomes. The ownership of other property would be just for the townhomes as well. The deed light restriction is something that's very new. We have kind of given the budget information that, that we're projecting those are going to be at that 1.3 million dollar price point. Again, we, I know we had discussion that we were thinking, we really want that to be whatever the market really will bear. But that number is what we've plugged into the budget information that you have seen. So if we do have variations of that, it will be obviously changing the subsidy that the town would be paying. ADUs, we have that brand new, very kind of vague information. We did obviously need to put that information in the deed restriction. But the intention is that it will be finalized prior to the vertical pricing approval. And, and then the final thing was kind of the lottery process for that right of first refusal for the Summit School District. That has also kind of a little bit vague-ish in the deed restriction as well. With the intention of the details of that being clearly defined in the workforce housing rules and regulations. And I think that was just kind of very fast, high-level overview of what the information is that's in the deed restriction. Then we have attached what we think is kind of the ideal draft of the deed restriction that we would be ideally ready to record.
Thank you, Darcy. Are there questions on this?
Darcy, do we have, when you talked about ADUs, one of the things that we talked about around this table a lot was ADU readiness and what the definition of ADU ready is? I think that you and Lori had a different, kind of different concept than Suzanne and maybe us. And do we ever nail down exactly what that looks like?
So not exactly. We have, the way we have worded it in kind of the deed restriction currently is just that they are going to be ADU ready. And then we intend to further define kind of what, what all of that entails in the supplemental that will be recorded prior to, I think Keely, we had decided prior to.
CEO of the first unit in a sale phase. So the reason why we have it structured this way is because we don't actually really know. I mean, there were a lot of different ideas about how the ADU program was going to play out, right? And I mean, even amongst you all on council, I think you had different thoughts about, should it be fully completed? Should it be partially completed? How, so we've kept it open so that we can experiment a little bit if we want to, if council wants to with the ADU ready piece. And so it can be anywhere from, I mean, it can be whatever we want it to be. So that's why it's sort of open-ended in the covenant, because we have this supplement that's going to be filed and recorded prior to the first CEO in each sale phase, which by that point in time, we will have to have figured out what we're going to do with the ADU ready units for that phase. Does that make sense? It's to provide us with flexibility to, to do it the way that council wants. Because there were a number of different, it's sort of a pilot program, I think is the way I would describe it at this point. And I, I think there's still a lot of details that have not actually been decided. Yeah.
I was just trying to avoid having our hands tied down the road saying, well, ADU ready now means this because, you know, it wasn't in the budget to be anything more than that.
No, that, so the, the wording in this covenant actually unties our hands and keeps it as, about as open-ended as, as it can be. So that it can, it can look for each sale phase. It could potentially be different. I don't know that I would advise it being drastically different, but it could be. If, if we try it one way and think, you know what, this sort of works, maybe, maybe we try building them completely out, right, for a couple of units and then seeing how that goes. And maybe that doesn't work that well because people don't want to pay that much money. So that might need, might not be how we want to do it in the next phase. Does that make sense? Yeah, so it's, it's to give you guys some flexibility to, to make some decisions about a little bit closer to when those units are actually going to be going up for sale. So we will also be, I mean, that's the other, there's a lot of factors to how we want those to look. And one of them is going to be, what does the market look like and what's the need in the community at the time that those markets or those units are getting ready to go to the market?
All right, so are people supportive of how this is written so far?
Yeah, I'll just jump in and say incredibly great work. You know, I've read a lot of deed restrictions through the years and it's awesome to see the hard work from the team on just adding all these little pieces in. And whether it's keeping costs, you know, with each transactional cost, keeping those low or adding in these, the ability to do maintenance, right? And having that count towards capital and, and just seeing like, hey, the rules are getting added in and the town's protected with the lien. And like, there's, there's fifteen clauses in here that weren't in there fifteen years ago. So keep up the great work.
Thanks. Learned a lot of lessons over the years.
It's good and I think it's great for, you know, our workforce. So nice job.
Thanks.
I also think it's really great that you guys worked with BSAC and presented to them and got that feedback from them. I think that was really helpful for me to help make the decision. All right, we're good with that? Great. Thanks, Darcy.
Thank you.
Text Lori, she'd be real happy. Okay. The comp plan update.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yeah, as our memo outlines, we are looking at undertaking a comprehensive plan update. Attached to cop to the 2008 comp plan for you to take a look at if, if you had a chance. But anyway, obviously 2008, it's been a while. It's probably due for an update in terms of, you know, we try to make these plans, you know, fifteen to twenty-year documents. And it's, it's, the timing is there. I gave a few examples of some of the policies that are in the 2008 comp plan that we have implemented over time. And those included our first attempt at neighborhood preservation back in like 2009, when we did put some limitations in place and FAR, Florya ratios in place. It also was really the genesis for the Sustainable REC Plan. At the time, John Warner, our mayor, was very like, we need to, in the comp plan, identify that we're going to take a further step here to actually do a sustainability plan. And that resulted in, you know, a couple of years later, us adopting that. A number of other things included in the existing comp plan, our policy on annexations where housing, we, we want to get like eighty percent, the goal is eighty percent housing in an annexation workforce housing. However, we'll adjust that number based on the AMI, is that type of thing. So we'll adjust it down in some cases if we get lower AMIs. So there's a number of things that the existing comp plan addresses and has. You don't see it on a regular, you know, basis. We don't refer to it all the time, but there's a number of policies that are addressed there. And an update to the jump was another one that was suggested as part of that process. And we did maybe three years or four years later. Since that adoption in 2008, the state, most recently just last year, made some new requirements for municipalities and counties in terms of the information that has to be included in comprehensive plans. And those include a strategic growth element, which requires us to take a look at properties that might be underutilized or could be ripe for redevelopment, that type of thing. And it, and it's really focused on housing. And is, are there opportunities to increase our housing, workforce housing stock and some properties like that? As well, there's a water supply element that's, that's required. This is something that I've been discussing with James and Laura Lynch. And we're planning to work kind of in concert on that to look at water supply issues in terms of make sure that we've got adequate water to serve future needs. And then a housing needs assessment, along with a housing action plan are required. The housing needs assessment, we think our current one that's countywide is going to meet a lot of those needs. But we may need to tweak it a little bit. Corey Burr is heading up that effort. And the housing action plan, what we're looking at there is actually taking the housing blueprint that we have now that was adopted about four years ago by council and updating that as part of this process as well. So it's a pretty ambitious process. We're looking at bringing a consultant onboard to help us with this, a consultant team. And it's definitely, we want to see a focus on robust public engagement, several periods of heavy public engagement, engaging underrepresented parts of the community as much as we can. And we also want to take a look at, one of the focuses is on redevelopment. Maybe getting some specific consultant advice and guidance and maybe some visual modeling for the public to see what some different scenarios for redevelopment might look like. So those are some of the things we're hoping to accomplish in this process. The timing is, we're hoping to put out a request for proposals next month. And then data, bring someone on hopefully in November. Data collection inventory in early, the late part of this year and start the public engagement process, probably January, February, early next year. And with the hope of actually adopting by the end of next year. It's an ambitious timeline, but the state requirements are that these particular elements are adopted by the end of 2026. So I've included a lot of other information in here as well. I won't go into details on that, but if you have questions, Chris and I are happy to answer them.
Questions for Chris and Mark?
You answered one of my initial questions by saying that the housing blueprint was going to be included as a part of this because I, we're at the end of that five-year period coming into it. Would there be any part of a review of our conservation district policies that would be part of this?
You know, Steve, we've talked about that and we're thinking, probably not much of a focus because, as you know, because you were on our committee back in 2019, we did a major kind of overhaul or took a look at our handbook of design standards for the conservation district. And we feel it complies, the state looked at it, feels it, you know, complies. And it meets the federal secretary of interior standards as well. There's, there's not a lot of gray area flexibility there in terms of, if we want to keep our standing as a national historic district as well as, you know, locally, we need to abide by those rules. They provide some flexibility and additions in the rear, things like that, as you know. But so we see the opportunities in this comp plan process in other areas, probably outside of the conservation district. Not that we will totally isolate it, but we think the focus will be on the areas outside of the district.
Anything else? Yeah, that's what, I'm a little worried about the timing. So how many of, I guess I don't know. I would encourage us to make sure that despite the state's timeline, that we do a good job on this. I mean, I would really hate to see any of these elements not get their public involvement or not get their due. So I think I'd rather write an I'm sorry letter to the state than to rush any of this. That's my personal opinion.
With our recent uptick of public engagement and we're learning through every process, like things that we've been successful, things that have not gone as well as we'd like, that I think they've been the nice warm-up to get us thinking about that. Because I think that's the most critical component. You know, it's really, your comp plan's only as good as the amount of public engagement and, and feedback you get towards adopting the plan.
And then I just, I guess I just, it made me think that we've had a couple of, I think exceptionally good contractors recently or consultants recently. And so I don't know if either of them are in the comp plan business, but we've also had some terrible ones in the past. So hopefully we get a good one.
Yeah, I think some of them are in the comp plan business and it may be that they bring together a little different team.
Exactly.
This focus that works well. The one thing I, I mentioned in here that I didn't elaborate on is we're going to focus a little more on, if you see the, the current generation of comp plans that are out there, they're less word-intensive, they've got a lot of graphics and catchy things, but they still try to focus on key issues. But there'll be a lot less probably of the data that's sitting there because it's honestly, it's, it's pretty boring for a lot of people to read or try to even sift through. And so it'll be a little more focused in terms of the actual resulting content that's in the plan, which is similar to like what the Sustainable REC Plan, the most recent update of that was.
Okay. Great. Thank you, guys.
Sure.
Forward to the process.
Probably more than you guys.
Thank you.
Do we have time for the last thing?
I would say it's probably best to move into your exec session in case you need extra time in there. And then if you don't, you can come out session and do some report outs.
Great.
Yes, can I get, excuse me, a motion under Colorado revised statutes 2464024A and E to discuss open space acquisitions in the Upper Blue Basin? To discuss negotiations regarding those and the real property implicated therein? And also under 2464024F to receive legal advice related to various litigation matters pertaining to the town. So there's just a couple of updates on lawsuits that I want to provide to you.
So moved.
All in favor? I. Ribbon cutting. Okay, we are now out of executive session. And we received advice from our attorneys and also information from Open Space. And we provided instruction to the negotiators to continue that process. And we are now going to the ribbon cutting at the skate park.
So one question, if we get back here, say by five forty-five, would you like to continue the work session? And do at least your report outs before you go to dinner?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
All right, we'll come back at the end of the ribbon cutting.
It's pouring, so it's probably.
Cutting at the skate park, which looks incredible. And the staff there did a great job of helping Team Payne figure out what we needed for our community and the, the kids programming there. So we were thrilled with the outcome and we are back to do our, to report out. Do you want to start with manager? For the manager?
Yeah. We only have a couple of things for you. We are going to be starting the retreat on the fourteenth at noon. The agendas that were sent out. We are going to spend a fair amount of time on the general fund, which we've kind of, done it sort of backwards for the past couple of years where we start with the short-term rental accommodations, which is our Fund 20. And then we work our way to the lower numbers of funds. We're going to flip it around and start with the general fund and then work our way back so that you have time, you can spend some time on operations. And you'll have some memos in that packet that'll be more informative than maybe what you've seen before. And an opportunity to ask questions of the department heads. And an opportunity to ask questions of the department heads or the division heads, depending on what their level of responsibility is. We will have boxed lunches and snacks and then dinner, and we are planning a very light agenda. So really ninety nine percent of your time will be spent on budget. It'll be here, yep. And then the other thing is just a reminder that on Thursday afternoon, evening, we have a meet and greet. With our five police chief candidates. That starts at four thirty and goes to six thirty at the community center in the discovery and hopeful rooms. And if you are planning to attend, if there's any chance you could be there closer to that four thirty time, that would be great. Though our consultant will kind of do a little bit of an introduction and then have each of the candidates say something to the group. So if you have a chance to be there for that, that would be great. If not, that's fine too. And I think that's all I had.
Great, thank you. Reported the mayor and council members, I'll start with cast MMC. We already reported out on MMC, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware that cast is over in Keystone. On the evening of the eighth of October and the night and then the morning of the ninth.
So just, I didn't realize it until the other day, the reception on Wednesday night is at Gravity House. So that'll be here and then the meeting will be.
In Keystone.
At Keystone, yep.
Great, so they like to have the host communities present, so everybody's welcome to attend. Make sure you tell Peyton as soon as possible because I'm sure that that deadline to reply is imminent. If not already passed. I think that's it. Open space?
We talked, you know, a fair amount earlier. I think the couple of things to add is we did a site visit to Loryum. And it is just one of those times that the county, well, county road and bridge. Our open space and rec history all came together to really make that space so inviting. And just so well done. I don't know, those who've been up there before, where the old parking spaces were. The county road and bridge. Maneuvered the road into those spaces so that the, the, the grade per foot is less all the way up to those. To the new spots. And so it's just, it's maybe a safer, better place for everyone. Our open space team did phenomenal and trails did phenomenal job plotting out and flagging the new trail. Let's say go from to the new, from the new parking spaces over to, um, to the meadow. And then rec history, as you guys know, they were able to do additional, an additional building of restoration. On the time and financial budget that they were provided for, uh, just the, uh, the boarding house. And it, it just, it, it looks so great. It stayed natural, the, the grass is, um. Is actually growing up to where some of the disturbance was previously. We're already working on having the signage start where the. Where the Green Gate Trail intersects with the new trail from the parking spaces. So that everyone has the opportunity to get the information they need. This, the, the new lead in from the parking spaces, you will have to cross the road. But it really allows you to enter that nature feeling immediately. And not have to walk down the road to, to go through the Green Gate. And just, um, just such a well done project all the way around. And I think we have a lot to be proud of with our partners and, and our, uh, our trails. We also are to do, both Zach and I do a site visit to Jefferson County to go through their, um. Some of their trails process and some of the, the things that they've done on the twenty second of October. And then we have a joint meeting, Bozak, Osak on November fifth that we're looking forward to. So just some of those exciting things that are going on.
The Jeffco, huh?
Yeah.
Crazy. Big time. All right, rec tourism office?
Meet Thursday.
History?
Rec history just want to report, there was some graffiti up at the Wellington Orbin. And they got to work on getting that cleaned up pretty quick. There was a bunch of graffiti on the inside as well on a hammock. So they're going to work on some surveillance up there and making sure that there's better eyes on that so we don't have a leak.
All right, uh, rec creative arts?
Absorbing the survey, meeting on the second.
Social equity?
We did have a meeting on Wednesday, so first we reviewed the Pedal Together initiative. There's still one event remaining, which was last Thursday before we met. But it was pretty amazing. It engaged more than thirty five riders. Including two individuals that had never ridden a bike before, so it was pretty, pretty special. It wouldn't have been possible without the folks at Avalanche Sports that donated the gear. Some of our open space team and rec team, so it was a really cool program that came together quickly. Also Lori came just to give the commission an update that the housing department is going to launch. A homeownership education initiative in partnership with the combined housing authority. So that process will be ongoing, really getting, excuse me, folks. The information they need to be prepared for homeownership well in advance of the runway. And finally, we had our incredible town clerk, May present to the commission. And May did an incredible job providing an overview of municipal government. And how Breckenworth, Breckenridge works, all our different departments. And we know the structure of government can be incredibly complicated. So kudos to May to boiling it down into a very digestible format that commissioners could understand.
That's awesome. Thanks for doing that, May.
And that's it?
When is that last pedal together date?
It was last Thursday, so.
Okay, great. All right, thank you. Arts and cultural master plan, anything to add?
No, I think he has got the, the full boat on that one.
You guys have a meeting coming up?
There is an RFP meeting that we are going to, uh, to convene for, just to go through the RFP for the master plan. And to make sure that everyone's on the same page, so that, that is ahead of us. And looking forward to seeing that process start again.
Good, cool.
That's Monday, so coming up real quick.
Okay, any other matters? An unusual amount of people comment to me lately about how tidy our like paths and walkways are. Like how there's no litter on the paths and walkways and no one had ever said that to me before. And in the last two weeks, I've had like three different people who are not people who talk to each other comment on that to me. So great job, public works. Great.
Good to know.
Nice to hear the nice side.
Great.
So I mentioned this earlier, but I really meant to mention it here, which is the National Brotherhood of Snow Sports is coming to Keystone. In February.
Eight to the seven.
End of February, beginning of March. But I think that's really cool opportunity for us to just welcome them with open arms. They'll be over in Keystone because they needed a big enough space. They have a big crew apparently. But we are really lucky to be able to host them for at least one day. And then we're also looking to put together interesting opportunities for, you know, that just entice them to come to Breckenridge. But also just help them enjoy their experience here. So Shannon and I had thought about, we'd probably do something to offer free Nordic passes or discounted or something. We might host like a skinning more, a mornings skin because apparently there's quite a few. One of the guys who's involved and actually did a really cool film this weekend at rec film fest is named Telly Mike. He's from Frisco, a local here. And so he is a backcountry skier. And he will be excited to lead a group of people up the mountain. So anyway, I just want to encourage you to think about, what are some other cool things that we can talk to them about or ways we can host them? Or partnerships with, you know, retail, restaurant association, all of that. We really want to get a great plan for that week. Of course, you know, they'll be in Keystone, but many will come here. Oh, we also talked about some parking, you know, helping out with an opportunity for parking and, but then also an opportunity for not bringing a car. Some transportation options, so you know, every step of the process is on the table.
Be sure to talk to Copeland. When I talked to him, he, that was very much on his.
Yeah, he, he is very well aware of, and the veil, when we.
Politically correct with the sister resort, but, uh.
Well, when we met with them, the Vale Resorts folks were also, when we met with MBS, Vale Resorts was also there. So it's, it's a pretty tight, um, I don't know, partnership already.
And they were going to be reaching out to Lucy.
Yes.
So.
Yep, they want to be able to make sure that they're getting the information out and we're trading information back and forth and everything like that. Okay? Anything else? And anything else we can get done?
I would, no, I don't think so. That Blue River Pathways discussion is, is going to take more time than.
Yeah.
You have, unless you wanted to run through it while you eat your dinner. So we can, if you want to do that, we can grab the comm dev folks and bring them down and do that. Otherwise, we'll push that to October twenty.
I think there's a benefit to having folks here and listening to the conversation. So my preference would be to push it. Are people okay with that? Okay, all right.
The only other thing I was, just came to mind that you guys might be interested in is holiday lights will be going up. What did James say next week?
Yep.
Starting next week. Um, obviously they don't get turned on, but there are a lot of lights to put up, so it takes them a little bit of wa, a little bit of time. And this year they will have a timer, so we won't have them on twenty four, seven. So they'll be going off on the overnight.
What time?
I think we are planning for around two thirty so that they're lit past, just past bar closing.
That's great. It's a good step in the right direction. I hope Rocky, I hope Rocky knows about that. Rocky the mouse, isn't that his name? Why are there so many blink?
You said Rossi and I was like, why did you think to talk about that? Rocky makes more sense. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I was chatting with Jacob while we were out there and he said he took, basically took what you guys said to heart. And was like, I am going to make things fun. So a lot of those new fun ideas are from your lips to his creative brain.
Mostly in his creative brain. Well, he's doing a great job. Anything else? All right, meeting adjourned.
Great.
Ready, May? All right, time is now seven o'clock. I'm going to call the town council regular meeting for Tuesday, September twenty to order. Roll call please, May.
Marika Page.
Here.
Dick Carlton. Steve Gerard.
Here.
Carol Sade.
Here.
Jay Beckerman.
Present.
Todd Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Owens.
Here. All right, approval of the, uh, approval of the minutes, town council minutes for September ninth, twenty twenty five. Any changes, corrections? Okay, minutes stand, approval of the agenda.
No changes.
As we're talking over there, I thought for sure there was something coming. Okay, in a nice time to recognize our Hispanic Heritage Month, I am going to go ahead and read the Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation. Whereas the town of Breckenridge takes pride in its diverse and vibrant community, recognizing that the strength of our town is rooted in the many cultures. Traditions and histories that enrich our shared life. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is observed nationally from September fifteenth through October fifteenth. Honoring the histories, cultures and contributions of individuals and families with ancestral ties to all Latin American countries. And whereas this annual celebration provides an opportunity to reflect upon and honor the traditions, languages, music, arts, cuisine. And values that have deeply influenced our nation and enriched the cultural fabric of our mountain community. And whereas Breckenridge is home to many Hispanic and Latino residents, whose talents, hard work, leadership. And dedication are essential to the vitality of our town and whose contributions sustain our local economy, particularly in our resorts. Businesses, schools and service industries, ensuring that Breckenridge thrives as both a destination and as a community. Whereas Hispanic and Latino culture is rooted in deep values of family, resilience, generosity and care for our community. Values that strengthen the social fabric of Breckenridge and serve as an example to all residents. And now therefore, therefore I, Kelly Owens, mayor of the town of Breckenridge. Do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty twenty five as Hispanic Heritage Month in Breckenridge. And encourage all residents to join in celebrating the rich histories, traditions and countless achievements of histor. Of Hispanic and Latino communities, while also committing ourselves to building a community of gratitude, equity and mutual care. Carol, you want to follow up with something?
Yes, um, I think it's so important that we take this extra moment to highlight and celebrate. The contributions of our Hispanic community members and their positive impact. Always, but especially in light of last week's event that really impacted a large and important part of our community. As in continuing to impact folks. And there's a lot of community members living in chronic uncertainty. And I think it's important in our leadership positions that we are vocal, that Breckenridge is better. Because of our Hispanic and immigrant community members, all of us know this. But again, I think it's so important that we in leadership positions are vocal in calling this out. And just being so glad they're part of Breckenridge. They contribute so much socially and economically. Their family, friends, neighbors, their business owners, their town staff, their community leaders. So over the next month, I think we really should celebrate the culture, art, history. And everything that our Hispanic community members bring to our community and really uplift those stories.
So well said, Carol. I, I couldn't agree more. I, and I, it, I think too often. We focus on the economic and the workforce side, but you know, these are friends, these are. but, you know, these are our friends. These are our neighbors. These are our children's classmates and, and, uh, they're, you know, it, you know, we're, we're such a more rich community with the, the diversity of, uh, this, um, this community that we're celebrating for the next month. So, you said it beautifully and I just wanted to raise, so.
Absolutely. We all wholeheartedly agree. And I'm so glad that we can take the time to just recognize um, our community as a whole this month and, and speak up. You're right, Carol. Okay. We are going to move on to communications to council. Now is the time for public comment, non-agen- non-agenda items only. Seeing none, oh. Ah. Made us so excited for a second. Seeing none, pu- public comment is closed. We are going to go into continued business, second reading of Council Bill Series twenty twenty-five. Council Bill number thirteen, an ordinance repealing ordinances twenty twenty, dash twelve, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-six, and twenty twenty-three dash twenty-one, and amending chapter one of Title Eight of the Breckenridge Town Code to here and after adopt the International Energy Conservation Code, twenty twenty-four edition by reference with amendments as part of the Town of Breckenridge Building Code, sections eight, one, three, and eight, one, nine. Rick.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Rick Fout, Chief Building Official for the Town of Breckenridge Building Department. We're here for the second reading of the twenty twenty-four International Energy Conservation Code adoption, with local amendments included. The complete ordinance with those proposed amendments has been incorporated as an attachment to our memos in your packets for your review over the last week, including some minor edits and small changes since the first reading that you are well aware of. We believe this new energy code with our proposed amendments, developed in several roundtables with building community slash stakeholder involvement, will steer the town of Breckenridge toward our long-range sustainability goals by making our buildings better and more energy efficient. The Breck Building Division thanks you for your time and consideration and recommends council approves and adopts the ordinance as presented.
Thank you, Rick and Philip. Any questions for staff? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number thirteen, series twenty twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve Council Bill number thirteen, series twenty twenty-five on second reading, including the amendments which do not substant- substantively change the bill as originally proposed.
Back in.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion?
I'll just comment, I'm a no on this. I love the code. I don't like the ratcheting down based on the square footage. And in this implementation, I think it's marginally okay. I just, I caution us as we work on other future, like fire mitigation, that sort of thing, the incremental costs that we add to each new construction. So I think for me, it's a, just, hey, think about this on other, other legislation we pass where we're adding significant costs. And so, yeah, it's more of a ceremonial no. Thank you.
Well, but, any other discussion?
I appreciate all the public engagement that you guys did. I think that was the big win off of, uh, this project was to be able to engage our community and our, our builders and architects. So thank you so much for making that happen.
It's a win for us too. Thank you, Todd and Council.
All right, thank you. Roll call please, May.
Councilmember Rankin.
No.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. All right. Council Bill number fourteen, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance amending chapter twelve of Title One of the Breckenridge Town Code concerning campaign finance complaints and municipal elections.
Good evening, Council, Mayor and Council. Excuse me. Um, this is a second reading for a code amendment to allow the town of Breckenridge to refer campaign finance complaints to the Secretary of State of Colorado per state law, which allows such a referral, provided, um, the council passes an ordinance. That is the one you have before you. Um, as noted previously, the town does not really have the resources or staff to process campaign finance complaints itself. And so being able to refer these to, um, the state will be very helpful in the future.
Thanks, Keely. Any questions for staff on this? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number fourteen, series twenty twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. May I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number fourteen, series twenty twenty-five, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call please, May.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yeah. Moving into new business, we're going to read Council Bill number fifteen, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance amending Title Four, Chapter Three of the Breckenridge Town Code regarding alcoholic beverages licensing regulations to remove references to drugstore liquor license and make other minor amendments.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, for today, for first reading is a proposed ordinance to amend chapter, I think, twelve. Sorry, let me pull it up here real fast. Sorry, Title Four, Chapter Three of the Breckenridge Town Code to remove liquor licensed drugstore references. The, the state of Colorado recently passed Senate Bill twenty-five zero three three, which prohibits the issuance of new liquor licensed drugstores. Um, the town does currently not have any of these licenses. Um, and so this is a housekeeping item to remove the reference from the code. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, May. Sorry to make you do double duty. Any questions for May? All right, any comments from the public on Council Bill number fifteen, series twenty twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number fifteen, series twenty twenty-five, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, Council Bill number sixteen, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance amending the Breckenridge Town Code concerning restitution to be awarded to victims of crimes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, um, this is your, this is your town attorney. Um, we are proposing to amend the Breckenridge Town Code to align with state law regarding when restitution must be ordered by the municipal court judge in criminal cases. That was currently ninety days, now it is sixty-three. This will actually result in restitution getting to, um, crime victims sooner. So this is a, a good change and will align us with state law.
Thank you, Keely. Any questions for Keely? Any comments from the public on Council Bill number sixteen, series twenty twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pass Council Bill number seventeen, series twenty twenty-five, the title which has been, oh, number sixteen, series twenty twenty-five, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call please, May.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman. Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yeah.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, moving on to Council Bill number seventeen, series twenty twenty-five, and ordinance approving an amendment to a lease of the Breckenridge Professional Building.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tracy Lambert, Senior Accountant. I'm here for the first reading on behalf of US Bank to request extension of their existing lease at the Breckenridge Professional Building, one thirty Ski Hill Road. They've been tenants since two thousand and six. Their current, uh, lease goes through May of twenty twenty-seven and they are requesting, uh, the extension of three, uh, terms of three years, effectively taking their lease out to May thirty-first, twenty thirty-six.
Thank you, Tracy. Any questions for staff on this?
We just had a comment, but don't wait.
Okay. Any comments from the public on Council Bill number seventeen, series twenty twenty-five? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Can I have a motion?
I think we're ready for, uh, Council Bill number seventeen now. I move that we pass Council Bill number seventeen, series twenty twenty-five, out of which has been read into the record.
And? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I, um, I engaged Rick a little during dinner break about why. We were making this change and, uh, makes total sense to me now. So I fully understand it. And, uh, and I think it is the right thing to do, so I'm supportive.
Great. And you were talking about the gross versus triple.
I am. Yes, the, the, yes, why the shift from, uh, triple net to gross and, you know, and it has to do with, just, just so that we, you know, put it on the public record. Um, it, you know, it has to do with, uh, our control of that property. You know, there's no HOA, um, no property tax. We, our insurance is, is part of a much larger, um, plan, so far less by, far less volatile than individual properties are. So, um, you know, that takes away a lot of the variability that makes triple net so much more favorable um, in the open market. So, um, so I've, I'm very supportive. It makes all the sense in the world. And I think it probably favors the town.
Great. Any further discussion?
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Gerard.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Owens.
Yes. All right, into planning matters, Planning Commission decisions. Stand. All right, any other matters? No. Okay. Great job, everyone. Thanks for, um, braving the cold town hall tonight. And for those of you who came to the skate park, the rainy skate park. Um, other than that, our next one, the long one.